Thank you for your patience. We'll be starting in just a minute. We went a little long in closed session and the board members, we will return to closed session after this meeting is over regardless of the time. Let's get that straight. And we're waiting for one more board member. He's on his way down. Thank you. Thank you, Richard. We're going to start out with some public testimony we have at the beginning of our meetings. We provide two opportunities. The first person for a public testimony is Jay Payne, Debbie Payne, Spencer Payne, and Jan Martin Valencia Park item.
Hi, my name is Jan Martin. I've been here before, but I wanted to show you one thing. My students at Valencia Park, they made a word search puzzle for you and the title of it is "Save Ms. Martins for VP." And just in case you don't have time to finish it, the hidden message is "Save Our Computer Lab and Ms. Martin." And I just wanted to give you that with a letter.
Thank you very much.
Hi there. My name is Jay Payne. My address is on file. I too have been here before and I just wanted to come before you and thank you for reinstating all of our magnet teachers at Valencia Park. Mrs. Jackson, you held some cluster meetings and you told us that you would do your best and I thank you for that. But I do feel like we're missing one major component at this school and that is our computer lab. It's a state-of-the-art computer lab as well as our aide. I think that the goal is if we lose our aide is to have the teachers take over the computer lab. I just have some concerns as a parent that that's just not going to work. I know in today's world of technology, computers and the learning skills that Ms. Martin has adapted to our children is a vital thing in our child's education and I really would be disappointed if that lab goes away along with our aide. If you would just take that into consideration in making your decisions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Spencer Payne and I go to Valencia Park as a Valencia Park student and I want to welcome you all to be here again. Thank you. I want to say a few things about the computer lab and how I feel. Well, the first thing is that all the new games that we have at the computer lab are really special to me because they all have different kinds of math programs like times tables and all that kind of stuff. Well, the second thing is that Ms. Martin is such a nice teacher and if you take her away, well, I won't be able to get all the fun games and... And if Ms. Martin is gone, the heart of Valencia Park is gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. We have Fabio Bagula and Frederica Perez, I'm sorry, followed by Roger Cannsdale Jr.
Good afternoon. My name is Fabiola Bagula. I'm at 1844 South 40th Street at Balboa Elementary. I know you have many difficult decisions to make and I'm fully aware of the dire financial situation our entire nation is facing. I'm speaking before you today because I'm concerned about September. I understand that the teaching allocations that provided to school sites were on the low end because of our budget crisis. However, the number of students sitting in the classrooms right now are not matching up to our next year's teacher allocations. I have worked out the best-case scenario with 24 to 1 ratio and we will be bursting at the seams. This scenario does not allow any room for growth throughout the year and year after year, Balboa has seen many kids enrolling in the last minute. Within the first two weeks of '07 or '08, we enrolled 78 students and within the first two weeks of '08-'09, we enrolled over 68 students. This year, we will not have spaces for them. We're not going to turn them away and we will accept them, but again, the beginning of the year will not provide stability to our population that needs it so much. The worst part about this is the constant reorganization. This school year, we had to reorganize three times. In October, we lost, we had to access two teachers and in December, we had to hire a long-term sub. This means the disruptions of students, hiring last-minute teachers without experience to turn around and prepare for a classroom of children in 24 hours. We lose teachers who are dedicated to our students, who have chosen to stay and work in an urban school and who have not been trained to provide the best practices. Balboa Elementary students do not have one day to waste. This year, we are accessing five teachers. Next-year scenario says we will only have two and a half kindergarten classrooms. I have been there since 2005. We've always had at least five kindergarten classrooms. Also, the 24 to 1 ratio, in order to make a nice scenario for next year, we're actually at 25 to 1 in grades kindergarten through third grade at the moment. So if you're having a difficult time finding those 200 teachers, places to work, please know that we will be having vacancies. And if you're having this difficult time as well for those 200 teachers, there are jobs going to be out there at schools like ours. And the best practice for all of our students is to not make these last-minute decisions in September, but to know in August so that we're better prepared. I definitely, we have a great momentum happening at Balboa Elementary School and I know it's happening at a lot of other schools as well and we don't want to halt that momentum with our students. So we really appreciate your support with this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roger Cannfield. I live at 4304 View Place. I'm speaking on something that's not on the agenda. On 10/2/08, I got to work and I received orders from my supervisor to move some furniture, which was told to me by Don Johnson, who's with the BSS3 at IMC. That's where I work at. And I just returned from an injury, not even like a month and a half before that was when I returned. And I told him I had restrictions. He told me he still had to do it by myself. And I got re-injured and then on December of '08, I was told that I was denied my claim. And at that time, I attained a lawyer and I've done the Return to Work Program that's offered by the district and the CalSTRIPIC leave. And on June 10th, I was put on unpaid status leave because I've seen four doctors, three by the district, and one of my own. It's still telling me that I have a new injury and yet the district does not want me to come back, doesn't want me to get healthy to come back to work and help the staff and the students. And so how is this fair? I mean, how am I supposed to pay my bills? And I feel discriminated. I mean, is this because I'm a union rep? Is this because I'm white? Is it because I'm short? How is this fair to injured workers, the people that get injured on the job? Is this the norm for the district to just throw away the injured workers? We get injured and we just get thrown away to the discarded? Or I don't understand. How is this fair to the people that spend time like myself on the job? I've been on the job for almost nine years. So this is unfair. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, we'll look into that. Pat Washington, Cecil Stepp, and Kathleen Veneta.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Greer. I'm here first of all to thank those of you who voted yes for the A through G resolution. And I really, really applaud you for doing that work and making that decision. I know a lot went into that. I also am here, in addition to saying thank you for that, to urge you to please take all steps needed and as we know necessary, to make sure that misinformation about what that A through G resolution was and what it does is corrected as soon as possible. Because those of us who studied it, who've worked with you on it, we know that it means that all of our kids will have the full range of skills they need to do well in work and education for the 21st century. That it's not an either-or proposition and it's not a situation where we're trying to force all schools, I'm sorry, all students into college. We know that. We have to communicate that to parents, to community advocates, to people, to students themselves, so that there will not be panic, there will be a full understanding that every single one of us wants what's best for our kids. And then finally, I am here to thank those of you, John Lee Evans, Mr. DeBeck that I know for sure, Richard, for standing up for David Morales, Superintendent Greer as well. It is atrocious to me that we would be upset that so many of our students are apathetic. And then when we have a few students who are brave enough, who take the time and energy enough to study issues and come before you and talk with you and talk with their peers to make this world a better place for themselves and others, that they will be punished such as David was and not be allowed to graduate high school, march with his, he graduated, I'm not making a mistake here, he did graduate, but not be allowed to march with his peers under some pretext because of his activism on the part of educational equity. So I hope you will work, I'm sure you're already working on it because I'm sure you're very disturbed about what happened to David, to make sure that doesn't happen to another student. We need more David Moraleses and we need more school board members who are willing to make sure our public and our educators and everyone else knows that when students stand up for what's right, what's equitable and what's fair, we stand with them. We don't punish them. So again, I'll end where I started. Thank you for the A through G resolution. I look forward to your putting together a committee rather, that actually gives life to the full intent and meaning of that resolution. And I truly hope that you do something as soon as possible to make sure there's not another graduation ceremony where any student ends up having to stand outside of that ceremony because she or he stood up for educational equity. Thank you.
Was it Deanna? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you and good evening. In the spirit of full, Kathy Vienna, 3770 Utah. In the spirit of full disclosure, I feel it's important to let you know that besides being an elementary counselor here for over 15 years, I've been a school board trustee in another district for the last six and a half years. So I can honestly say I feel your pain, although I don't understand your decision-making. It'd be a lot easier to understand your motives and your decisions if you had a more user-friendly budget. It can be done and if your process was transparent, it must be done. At the last week's board meeting, Mrs. Nakamora said, quote, "40% of our students drop out in 10th grade because we screwed up in middle school." The truth of the matter is you're really screwing up in elementary school and if we don't create a positive experience for the students and parents in elementary school and we don't identify students with special needs at an early age, then these students are slated for failure. Over and over this year, I've heard or read about board members boasting about not having to cut any classroom teachers. This comment alone shows what little respect you have for elementary counselors. The success of the teachers is only as good as the support behind them and I'm sure teachers would support this comment. I find it hard to believe that board members would not understand this. Among other things, elementary school counselors have been tasked with doing, reducing referrals, reducing suspensions, increasing attendance, increasing academics, and bringing in more Medi-Cal money. We're doing this and more by providing classroom lessons, small group and individual counseling, facilitating SST meetings, going on home visits and referring students to SARB, et cetera, et cetera. Let me sum up what a terrible hit elementary schools are taking next year. You are reducing counseling, removing VPs, increasing class size, mainstreaming more special ed students. And at my school in particular, we're getting over 50 new students and a new principal. Who is going to provide the support? I'm not questioning this irresponsible decision if I didn't have a solution for the problem. There's a terrible rumor that $17 million of the stimulus money is going to be spent on another educational experiment in one cluster. I hope this is only a rumor. Now's not the time for experiments. Now's the time to support our programs and all of our students, not just the chosen few. Use the money as intended. Give some of the money to the elementary schools so that they can reinstate their counselors and give the teachers and the students the support that they need and deserve. Thank you.
Good evening, President Jackson, Board members, Superintendent Greer. My name is Cecil Stepp, Chairman of the Board of Directors for Gompers Charter Middle School and Gompers Preparatory Academy located at leased property 1005 47th Street. I'm here to request a meeting with you Superintendent Greer and our Executive Committee to discuss your plans to expand Millennial Tech Middle School onto the existing Gompers Charter campus, including installation of portable classrooms onto our playing field, development of a bus terminal for Millennial Tech students at a cost of over $750,000. We identified in our charter, at the time that our school was converted to charter school status, that under Prop 39, the district has no right to appropriate any portion of our site without a material revision to our charter document, which would need to be mutually agreeable. The proposed bus terminal for Millennial Tech would be located immediately behind our high school classrooms and would present a health hazard for our students in session. Also, the noise of a bus terminal with bus engines running just outside a classroom during school hours would be very disruptive on student learning. Using the Hilltop Drive area for the buses, as we have suggested in earlier communications, would create no cost or inconvenience for the community. The installation of new portable classrooms for Millennial Tech onto the current Gompers Charter field needs to be set in a timeframe that would allow for the future development of a joint-use recreational facility that would adequately support the physical education and recreation needs of our schools and the local community. As designated in Prop S, ballot measure, seems to me that there were funds made available for that joint use. These two areas to us are a concern of fairness and equitable treatment for both Gompers Charter and Millennial Tech. Gompers Charter does not want to fight with the district over this, but if these expansion projects proceed, the school will have no choice. We respectfully request that the Board order a delay on these projects for 30 days so that our rights can be investigated before confrontation is forced upon both parties. We need to meet to resolve these issues prior to starting any construction on our campus and we await your Board setting the date, location, and time for the meeting. The last item, I have gone through the website trying to find at what point was the construction of these two operations on our facility approved by the Board. I would like for someone on staff or someone to tell me what part of that I can find. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Scott.
Good afternoon. My name is Robin Scott. Address is 8951 Oro Street. And thank you for allowing me to present. I don't have anything in writing. I'm just going to go speak from the heart. Okay. I'm a district counselor in Council Elementary School. I've been there for five years now and I'm there full-time, five days. And I echo everything that Kathy Vienna spoke of, everything she spoke, I totally agree with. Being that I've been there so long, I've been able to establish a rapport with the students and the staff and the community and the family members. And I've been able to make some connections with them and we've made great gains this year as far as attendance goes. What concerns me is that the elementary school counselors have a major, play a major part in education because we provide emotional support to our students, not just academics and all the students to me. That I'm a member of the crisis response team and we went out twice this year to a school that has zero days for counselor services. And that's a great disservice to the students there. And I asked them, who do you speak to for emotional support? And they said their teachers. Teachers have a lot on their plate. And especially with the economy being the way it is now, we've been doing more of a social work type role and breaking referrals to county, community agencies, referrals to families that, you know, needs resources. So if there's a way we can assure that there's counseling at the elementary level because we're laying down the foundation for the middle and high school students. We're teaching them a work ethic, responsibility, the coping skills and the character education that they're not allowed to get in the classroom because of the academic piece that the teachers have to fulfill. So if I'm allowed to, I would like to show you some of the, I'm going to give this to you if it's okay, of our, some graphs comparing our attendance at Encanto last school year and this school year because that was a major focus for us, one of the major focuses that we had. And again, it wouldn't have been able to be done if it wasn't for the counseling. And I'm hoping, am I forgetting anything? Anyways, thank you for allowing me the time, the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public testimony at this time. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. I'm Sheila Jackson, President of the Board. I would like to welcome all present today and call the June 23 regular meeting to order with all board members present. We hope the discussions and decisions you observe today will give you a better understanding and appreciation of the important part that you play in setting the course of education and setting a unified school district. Agendas for today's meeting are available at both entryways to the auditorium, at the information desk located near the press table, and on the internet at www.sandy.net. In addition to the broadcast of our meeting on ITV and the live webcast, we also use Board Docs, the web-based program, to enhance governance, reduce the amount of paper we generate and provide for better public communication. The Board members requested individuals with pagers and cell phones, please turn them off or put them on the silent mode while you're in the auditorium. And that during the meeting, please enter and exit during the door at the back or the door at my left in front of the press table. The Board asks your cooperation to comply with the FAR code, which does not allow for standing in the back of the room or in the aisles. We ask those to please, those folks, please be seated now. Thank you. I still see red shirts back there, but they'll be seated in a few minutes, I'm sure. The Board welcomes your comments in writing and during public testimony. The board welcomes your comments in writing and during public testimony. Public testimony request forms are located on the tables to my right and inside the front and back entrances of the auditorium. The board asks that speakers focus their comments on issues and not on individuals. Acceptance of public testimony requests are closed as each agenda item is called and our discussion begins. Board members and superintendents are interested in your comments, and staff will respond to those issues in a couple of days. We wish to address, if you wish to address the board today, your name is not on the blue sheet, and you have not submitted a public request testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called to speak for discussion of that agenda item when it is called. Agenda items have a maximum of twenty minutes per consent and/or action item, for a maximum of ten minutes per opposing viewpoints, a maximum of three minutes per speaker, no deferral time is allowed. Non-agenda items were heard at 5:00 PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. Testimony is limited to fifteen minutes per item and three minutes per speaker, no deferral time is allowed. The board operates under Robert's Rules of Order, which confer upon a governing body and the audience participation in proceeding in a silver, a civil and courteous manner. Dr. Evans will present our visitors today. Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Jackson. Today, I'm very happy to introduce Principal Susan Izu and the students from Sequoia Elementary. Sequoia Elementary is one of our neighborhood schools in Clermont. You may have heard the name because they were previously on a list for a possible closure. And I was very happy to be there a couple of days after that was, closure was, did not happen, and saw a very enthusiastic group of students who met for their morning assembly with their music teacher and began to, you know, you can just bring them, Mrs. Izu? Susan? You can just bring them all up here on the stage. Yes, on the stage, we got the microphones up here. Come right on up so everybody can see them, just all around here.
Go ahead, be the first one. We don't bite.
Anyway, I saw a very enthusiastic group of students and parents and teachers. Sequoia is still in session because Sequoia is a year-round school, so if anybody is interested in having your child in a year-round school, Sequoia is an opportunity for that.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Greer. Please celebrate with us Sequoia Elementary, and keep in mind Sequoia Elementary is one of your small schools, and we thank you, Dr. Evans, for inviting us today. I hope that you will enjoy the voices and song from the students from Sequoia. The voices of students are the sentiments and sounds that we wish you could hear and witness every single day. I hope that you will, next year, provide time for small schools to renew and reestablish in their communities. But today, with the wish that you can give small schools your patience, listen to the voices of your charges, celebrate the school days with these children, enjoy the music led by our prep time teacher, Peggy Jacobson, and also enjoy some speeches from a few of the boys and girls. So first of all, I'd like to have the children who are going to give our little speeches, can you move down this way over here? Right up to the front? Christian, over here, Faith, Daniella.
You're going to speak, I think, in this. Can you, can you use that?
Yeah.
You might have to lift it up and hold it like you're singing when we're singing in the auditorium. Do you do that?
Yeah.
Okay. You might have to bend down a little bit. Okay?
I can just go like this.
Okay, you wanna say your name?
Yeah.
You can start.
I wanna let him go first.
Board of Education and Dr. Greer, my name is Christian Loggett, and I'm a second grader at Sequoia Elementary School. You have no idea how much fun we are having in second grade. Every Thursday, we get to use laptops and go on cool websites like Practice Planet and Study Island. We've also been reading fairy tales. Did you know there are over seven hundred versions of Cinderella from all around the world? For math, we play fun games that help us understand numbers. We have been studying mealworms and butterflies for science. Some of the mealworms have become pupae, and some have died. Mine died, but I got a new one. Today, we got, we went on a field trip to the Monarch Program. We learned about butterflies there, and I actually got to hold one. Sequoia is an amazing place to learn. Thank you for keeping our school open next year.
My name is Faith. I'm in kindergarten. In kindergarten, we learn to write fiction and non-fiction stories. We learn about helpful and not helpful facts. We raise money to buy a goat and a sheep for children in Africa.
Very good.
Uh...uh...mm...my name's Tommy, I'm in third grade. He said he forgot.
Oh my God! Why did he get a paper?
I'm gonna kill you when we get back to school!
That was dad's thing!
School is one of the most, is one of the main reasons I get up in the morning, not just because my friends are at school, but because it's the only place where I learn. I also have fun learning too. We play twenty-four math games, paper dollars, terrible ceremonies, laptops, and reading. We're also raising plants. Room 10 is a very fun, fun place. My classmates aren't just my classmates, they're my family.
Who's next?
Hello, I'm Kyla Quinn, and I'm in the fifth grade at Sequoia Elementary. We learned so many things this year that it would be impossible to tell you all that we have learned so far, but here are some highlights. In math, we learn how to multiply and divide decimals, and where to put the decimal point in the quotient. In social studies, we learn about how we became the United States of America and how we broke away from Great Britain. In reading and writing, we get taught how to write persuasive texts and how to recognize how people are trying to persuade us. And last but not least, we learn about the human body. We learn how the kidneys filter toxic waste from your blood and how the digestive system works. And for those times when it's easier to have an experience, we can go on field trips. One of my favorites was going to Balboa Park. There, we learned about the history of man and natural science. My whole fifth grade class is looking forward to going to the USS Midway this July and listening and learning to their science presentations on weather. Thank you for listening to my speech about the fifth grade.
Thank you.
Well done! Well done, Rachel!
Hi, my name is Tiara Follow, and I have been attending Sequoia Elementary since kindergarten. However, as a sixth grade student, this is my final year at Sequoia. There have been a lot of great memories at Sequoia. One of my best memories this year has been connecting with another learning community by sharing our ideas, our cultures, and good times with pen pals from La Jolla Elementary through letters and social events. Academically, this year, we have spent time reading and writing in a variety of genres. My favorite book this year was The Wedding Planner's Daughter, and my favorite writing assignment was the persuasive letter I wrote to Dr. John Lee Evans. In math, we have worked hard on developing our math, our number sense and mathematical reasoning. In social studies, we have studied ancient civilizations like Egypt, China, and Greece. The best tool we have had to help us learn this year was the use of laptops in our classroom to do research, create PowerPoint presentations, type our papers, and study for the CST using Study Island and Practice Planet. I'm also looking forward to the fun sixth grade activities that sixth grade students at Sequoia traditionally get to participate in, such as the Greek Olympics at La Jolla Shores, the sixth grade dance, the sixth grade picnic, the sixth grade softball game against the faculty, and the promotion itself. Thank you for voting to keep our school open so students like my younger brother, Joseph, can have the same awesome learning experience I had while attending Sequoia.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Julia, I'm in first grade, and I've been in Sequoia ever since kindergarten. What I like about school, what I like about school is that I learned how to spell words and draw pictures. I also learned about tens and ones in math, and about freedom and national holidays and social studies. I learned about plants and animals and science. I love coming to school because of my teacher, Mrs. C., Room Six, and my friends. Sequoia is the best school in the world.
Hi, my name's Carson, and Haley's dad made some white wood for us so that we can make sculptures, and I made a sculpture of this tank.
We're gonna end with your grand old flag and your grand old school that we practice weekly at our flag ceremonies.
You're a grand old flag, you're a high-vi flag, and forever a peace made way. You're the emblem of the land I love, the home of the freedom and the praise. Every heart beats true for a red light and blue where there's never a host or press. But should all the waiters be forgotten, keep your eye on the grand old flag. You're a grand old school, you're a high-ranking school, you're the best in the west, we'll say, Sequoia! And the kids have hearts and do their part, they're loyal to you every day. Every heart beats true for a red light and blue, we're the best school in every way. But should all the waiters be forgotten, our school is here to say, Sequoia!
In case anyone forgets why we're really here. Thank you, Dr. Evans, that was wonderful. We're gonna move to Item C on our agenda, which is Report of Closed Session Actions and Superintendent's Informational Report. Dr. Greer?
Thank you, Board President Jackson. Tonight, the board approved the reappointments of Assistant Principals in the district, and on a five-o vote, approved Cesar Cantar as being, from Principal Special Assignment to Principal at Twain, Barbara Allen to Director of Educational Technology, Kern-Ackney as Principal of the School of International Studies at San Diego Complex, Gina McCacho-Mgrath, I'm sorry, to Principal Fletcher Elementary School, Mary Canny to Executive Director of Instructional Support Services, Herberto De Lute as Principal of Chesterton Elementary School, Bradley Holt, Program Manager, Special Education, David Lorden, Professional Development for Administrator Support and Integrated Teams, Nellie Meyer to Executive Director of Dropout Prevention, Vernon Moore as Principal of our Alternative Learning for Behavioral and Attitude, our ALBA Program, Francisco Morga, Principal Jefferson Elementary School, Derek Murchison, Principal Adams Elementary School, Ron Rode, Program Manager, Monitoring and Accountability, Linda Williams, Principal Wedgeforth Elementary School, Jennifer Wawski, Principal Hickman Elementary School. That completes my report, President Jackson.
Any informational items?
No informational items tonight.
Sure. We want to adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, please vote. The agenda passes five-zero. I'm gonna ask at this time, and I had a presentation presented to me, and I'm gonna ask this presented to the entire board by the teachers' union. President expression. Thank you.
Can you open the door?
I do believe... Since Superintendent Carl Cone's departure last year, San Diego Unified has begun to slide backward toward the hostility, division, and distrust which characterized previous years. STEA members care about our schools and we will not allow this trend to continue. Throughout this year's budget deliberations, the superintendent has disrupted and frightened employees and attempted to pit parents and students against their teachers. His continued threats to our schools based on misinformation are unacceptable. The District has used scare tactics for too long. The administration had a responsibility to produce accurate and reliable budget numbers to the School Board months ago. It's clear to us that the continued financial inaccuracies are either a demonstration of incompetence or they're a purposeful attempt to frighten and divide our school communities. Neither of these, uh, sorry, and undermine the leadership of our School Board. Neither of these are acceptable. Today, you'll hear from a couple STEA members about how decisions being made by top administrators are harming our schools and damaging our confidence in San Diego Unified School District. But first, on behalf of the thousands of members of STEA, we present you with the following petition. "We, the undersigned members of the San Diego Education Association, pledge our support for any and all Board of Education actions taken on behalf of the children, teachers, and staff of the District to restore our confidence and trust in the administration of SDUSD. San Diego's educators chose public education as a career to contribute to the future of our community's children. We readily accept the challenges of working in public schools and we stand prepared to work with you through the current economic crisis and other challenges before us. But in the past year, we've witnessed a return to the environment of fear, hostility, and divisiveness that characterized past years in San Diego Unified. This environment can only serve to impede the progress we're making with our students while deepening the challenges before us. We cannot stand by while another top-down administration makes decisions which damage our schools, limit our ability to serve our students, and ultimately place the future of our District in jeopardy. We call on you," this was originally addressed to Sheila Jackson, but now to all Board members, "as the Board of Education, to do everything in your power to reverse the current negative trajectory of the District and to restore us again to a place where honesty, openness, and fairness are valued in words and in action."
I'm gonna ask that people not speak. I just wanted you to deliver the petition to me and then can you finish rolling it back up and taking it back up? You know, I just wanted people to see the length of the petition, really.
We had two people that have like a one-minute shield while we're rolling.
No, because it'd be public comment testimony and we already did that. But I did want to allow you to...
Sheila, I'll yield my board information report time to the speakers.
Excellent, very good.
So you're yielding time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sandy Davison from Baker and a lot of people are wondering why teachers are so upset and what all the fuss is about being upset about class size changing. And the classroom is a complex relationship and it brings, if you bring one more student into class, it adds complexity in the form of many new relationships. I've got a chart here and what is just one more student? Well, just one more student depends on the class size. If you have just one more student in a class size of 15, that's 15 new relationships. If you have just one more student in a class size of 24, that's 24 new relationships. So as you notice, I've highlighted some certain significant numbers and it shows the difference, this is people and this is the number of relationships that happen. And so a classroom with not even twice as many students will have triple the number of relationships and it's an exponential relationship, increasing the complexity and the social environment in the classroom. And this is why teachers are so concerned about class size. Please, please do everything you can possible to keep our numbers down. Thank you.
My name is Erin Clark. I'm a National Board Certified History Teacher. I teach at San Diego Early Middle College and I'm here today to speak on behalf of my brothers and sisters at STEA. As we've just established, I'm a history teacher. I don't teach mathematics, which is perhaps why I'm having such a hard time making sense of some of the numbers that we've been hearing lately. This past spring, we were told that the initial deficit of the District was $180 million, which resulted in the creation of two plans, Plans A and Plans B. Plan A was designed to attack students by attacking their teachers and Plan B was designed to attack students by attacking beloved programs and we were told that one or the other had to suffer or the budget could not be balanced. Since then, on June 2nd, the District discovered that the budget deficit had shrunk by $74 million, which seems to me to be a very large number. And then on the 16th, two weeks later, the deficit had been discovered to have shrunk by 25 million. So in the space of two weeks, the budget dropped from $180 million to roughly 80 million in terms of the deficit. And I think that's very interesting because both Plan A and Plan B were ultimately disregarded and the District went with a Plan C. Neither of those which we were told had to happen indeed happened to balance the budget. And so it has become very difficult for us in STEA to trust the numbers that we're hearing from the District. Given all of that, the District is still pursuing cuts to teachers' health care, class size increases, and other items which we find unacceptable. And we're being told that these things have to happen because of this dire budget deficit, which we are seeing mystically shrink before our eyes. And so we would like to see those concessions that are being sought from the Teachers' Union off of the bargaining table because we simply cannot trust the numbers that are coming out of the District. And I think what's even more astounding is that VIBA analysis of the health care proposed cuts indicate that in fact it wouldn't even save the District a significant amount of money, if any money at all. And so I feel a little bit like Dorothy wandering around, having been struck by a tornado of misinformation and I have to ask who the man behind the curtain is and where these numbers are coming from. And I think it's time for the District to acknowledge that you need to bargain with us at the bargaining table and not through the media. You need to bargain with us with accurate and fair numbers and information and you need to understand that in order to respect students and meet their needs, you need to acknowledge the importance of the work that teachers do. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on. Moving on to Item E. Item E is the Board Consent.
I would just like to formally object to that being placed on the agenda. I find that in terms of honesty, openness, and fairness, sneaking that onto the agenda is totally unfair to the superintendent and disregards, you know, process for this Board of Education. I just simply think as far as hostility is concerned, that was an open act of hostility and completely unnecessary.
Item E, Board Consent Agenda. All these items are to be made with one motion unless someone pulls one. I wanna pull Item E05.
I move that we approve, if there are none others to be pulled, we approve everything except Item E05.
Don't note it? Okay, please vote. It passes 5-0. Item E05, I just wanted to ask our legal officer. I had asked about the filing of Form 700 for these people and I don't see it in the document, but I wanted, I don't mind approving this as long as it's understood that they're required to submit their forms.
We have been working with the ICOC on bylaws for that committee that would, before they become official, need to include Board approval after a draft is completed. And at the last ICOC meeting, I raised that issue and informed them that the Political Reform Act issue would be needed to be incorporated into the bylaws, which is where you usually find it in ICOC provisions incorporating that law. So it would, it will come back to you in the bylaws.
So, okay. I guess my concern is I just wanna make sure it does come back into bylaws. Okay.
Yeah, I will, I will make sure the, I think the ICOC understands that at this point. I'll make sure they do.
Thank you, very good. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, please vote. We're moving now to items in the F area. F01 is informational reports, Mr. DeBeg, then Ms. Nakamura and Dr. Evans. Nakamura?
Nothing to report at this time.
Dr. Evans?
I'd just say very briefly, we've been meeting with various communities. The Madison Community of Schools is getting very organized and on this Saturday, Erickson School and Elementary School in Miramesa is having a campus beautification day, which the Miramesa heroes and parents and other people are participating in, so I wanna congratulate them for that.
We want to, Item F02, which is our public hearing adoption of the '09-10 district budget. Dr. Greer and staff?
We're on. Thank you. This time I'd like to introduce James Macias, our Chief Finance Officer, who is going to walk us through our budget presentation and answer any questions that the Board may have. As you know, it is required by law in California that the Board submit a balanced budget for the 2009, 2010 school year, 2010, 2011, and 11-12 to the County Superintendent and the County Department of Education on or before July 1st. So we have had numerous workshops and board meetings to discuss the budget. I promise you, I feel the frustration that was expressed tonight by one of our speakers about the change in the budget numbers and would encourage that speaker to contact representatives from our State Department and our Governor's Office. I think our Finance Department has done an admirable job trying to respond to numbers that we get out of Sacramento that change sometimes literally on a daily basis. And so while I know it's very frustrating to members of our different bargaining units and to staff and community in general, it's also very frustrating to Board members and to the Superintendent and the staff as well. So with that, James, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Board members. Dr. Greer? Trying to get this to work a little bit, it's not moving for me. Hey Cheryl, this isn't working. It's turned on and it's not moving.
I've got two on the clicker, but is it, which one is it or does it matter? Got one that says budget adoption PowerPoint and then another one budget adoption PowerPoint.
Got it? I think it's the first one.
Gotcha. So what you should have in your pack is a few items. If you look at the first item, it's a PowerPoint presentation that's up on the, displayed on the Board right now. It's titled 2009-10 Budget Adoption, June 23, 2009. You've also got a SACS report, which is about a 200-page document. We also have a draft version of the budget book. You have a one-page resolution. You have a copy of the June 23 multi-year projections. Also have a June 18 multi-year projection and a sheet that's titled June 23 Grant Carryover. So I'll start off with the PowerPoint presentation now and before I get going, what I'd like to do is reiterate what we're trying to get accomplished tonight, members of the Board, Dr. Greer. Our goal is to essentially have you folks adopt the budget for the 2009-10 year. You have the option of either approving or disapproving. The other is to adopt the solutions that we have projected to solve the shortfalls that we have listed in the 2010-11 year. And then also finally, in conclusion, is to approve the resolution, which you have a copy of in front of you that states you resolved to ensure that you work to take action on the items that we have listed to ensure that you balance the budget in the 2009-10 and also the two out-year projections. If you look at the overview slide, the first one's gonna be the multi-year projections and that's the June 23 date. We also have 2010-11 Shortfalls and Solutions. We also have a slide that highlights the shortfall that we currently have for the 11-12 year. And then the remaining documents are really to be included for you as a frame of reference so you can go back to and just understand what we've done in reconciliation. So what we provided for you is from the 18th to the 23rd, based on us closing down the financial ledger this past Saturday, any changes that took place. Also, on the remaining pages, we included for you just specifically for the June 23 date, year-over-year changes for that point of time. So that's what you have included in this presentation. What I'd like to point out to you is just review with you folks quickly the multi-year projections and from the 18th date to essentially the 23rd, today's date, and us finally closing the ledger on Saturday, the numbers have not changed significantly. You will see that the 10-11 projection is a deficit still of $64 million. We've included a sheet there for you of possible solutions that you could approve to take that would essentially balance that. The other number in the 11-12 is $171 million. On the 18th, that was approximately $168 million, okay? So that's what's changed at a high level.
James, could we just, particularly because of comments we had earlier by Speaker, for the Board and the staff, if we look at the 2008, 2009 projections, so in terms of balancing the budget for the 2009, 2010 school year, how much of a shortfall are we looking at?
Well, if you look in 2009-10, based on all the items that had been approved previously, Dr. Greer, you're balanced. So you're balanced, '08, '09, you're balanced in 2010. Keep in mind though, like you said, this has been a process of over, I think we finally counted up, it's, today is either the 15th or the 16th time we've met over the past several months to essentially resolve the budget gap in conjunction with all the changes that have taken place at the state level. So for tonight's item, from my perspective, the most important thing tonight to do is to solve and resolve the 2010-11 projection and you can refer to that in Column 4, Line Item 13.
So again, my point is just for the, for the public and the staff, in terms of balancing the '09-10 school year, how, what was the shortfall between our revenue and our expenses?
80 million.
How much did we have to cut in order to balance the budget?
Yeah, it was $80 million.
Okay.
Yeah, that was $80 million, so...
And then to, to balance the '10-11 budget, the Board would have to take action. That would have to make additional cuts by how much to balance that budget?
For 10-11, 60, the 64.6 number. Keep in mind, a couple of things we did is, remember when we were here this past Thursday, you folks approved two items. One item was us to recognize the developer fee interest, so we went ahead and did that, so that adjusted the number slightly. That was about $5.6 million. That impacted for '08, '09 and carried forward a little bit. We've also had the integration in the fiscal year 2009-10 for Distribution Services. That was about $1.1 million. We were able to positively impact the general fund at about $700,000 and the $400,000 went to food services and also state school facilities. So that 1.1 wasn't a total help on general fund. About 400 of that was essentially on our restricted resources in food services and also the capital piece of state school facilities. That, making those adjustments and plugging through our assumptions for salary, step-in column, healthcare, those kinds of things, gets us to back at the 10-11 number of the shortfall of $64.6 million. If you look at the 18th date, that 10-11 number was $64,433, $748. As you see it now, it's $64,689, 654. So that number really has not changed significantly. What you see in that 11-12 projection is some of the... One item was us to recognize the developer fee interest. So we went ahead and did that, so that adjusted the number slightly. That was about $5.6 million. That impacted for our oh eight oh nine and carried forward a little bit. We've also had the integration in the fiscal year 2009-10 for the distribution services. That was about $1.1 million. We were able to positively impact the general fund at about $700,000 and the $400,000 went to food services and also state school facilities. So that 1.1 wasn't a total help on general fund. About 400 of that was essentially on our restricted resources in food services and also the capital piece of state school facilities. Making those adjustments and plugging through our assumptions for salary, step in column, healthcare, those kinds of things, gets us to back at the 10-11 number of the shortfall of 64.6 million dollars. If you look at the 18th date, that 10-11 number was $64,433 and $748. As you see it now, it's 64,689,654. So that number really has not changed significantly. What you see in that 11-12 projection is some of the compounding effect that happens based on, as you go from year over year, you increase your base, so you have a base, at one level, you go to the next year, your base increases. You take those additional costs, it has a multiplier effect essentially, and that's why you see 171 million dollars there for the 11-12. Based on a very preliminary forecast that we did yesterday, we think that if you can solve the 64 million dollar problem in 10-11, and if you can take that number to about 85 million, Dr. Greer, that the 171 will almost go to zero, depending on how many ongoing solutions we have into that 11-12 year. So the goal is, you see the number of 64.6 million dollars in 10-11, which is column four, row 13. If you tack on about 20.3, 20 million dollars on that, we think that you'll be able to have almost a zero balance in column five, line item 13. So that 171 would significantly be reduced based on us taking about 85 million dollars worth of actions at this point in time.
Thank you, James.
So, like I said, the slides underneath there essentially begin on approximately, let me just get to the right slide number.
I'm looking at page four.
I think, James, perhaps from this point on, the board, as you said, this is our 15th or 16th time together. They've had this information and perhaps now might be a time that if we have any questions, just to try to get the questions answered versus spending a lot of time, because we have a lot of speakers, and see if the board members have any questions about your proposal.
Can I, I just wanted to make sure that...
Sure.
Members of the board understood what we are trying to get accomplished tonight. And I just, that's adopt the 2009-10 budget, that's adopt the solutions that we proposed. You're seeing the list of solutions right here, and then also approve the resolution. I mean, our end goal for tonight is essentially, if we can get that done, then we'd be able to submit to the county office by July 1 date.
Mr. De Beck?
Yeah, okay, so you got the right page up. So if we approve the items from, on this particular page, from 1 through 17, we'll have balanced the 2010-11 budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so that's the first order of business, to approve or not approve those cuts?
That's correct.
All right. Now I've got to page four, I mean, page five. Wait a minute, I'm sorry, this thing's pretty tricky. Okay, go to page five. The running total keeps going, but it doesn't show us a solution for 11-12. So what you're saying is if we should not take those items in page four, that page five is alternative possible items that would reduce the amount for 2010 and 11, or would it be...
Yeah, that's correct. So what we did is, we wanted to make sure that we clearly understood the message that there are solutions that we have presented to you that essentially has to have consideration and agreement by our bargain group.
So when are you telling me, well, let me get to it. On page five, which is, gets 174 million, which is more than 171 for the projection, if we acted on everything from 1 to 44, we'd have a balanced budget for the two years, 2011 and 12?
I think if you acted on items 1 through 16, 1 through 17, you'd have a balanced budget for the 2010-11 year. If you took an additional 20 million dollars that you see here, you would be very close to balancing the projected deficit in the 11-12 year.
Okay, so basically, those are the two items that we might want to act on if we felt we could support them.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other board member, questions, comments? We have a numbers...
As I can, so...
Okay. Oh, we have a number of speakers. Speakers, you will have one minute. I will start with the blue sheet and go to another list, and we'll go on till we get done. Thank you. Gilarima Rice, Martha Moreno, Libby Monta, Fernando Rios, Cindy Martin, Thomas Liberto, Pat Crowder. Pat Crowder.
Uh huh. Okay.
Okay. Hello, my name is Marlon Rice. I'm speaking at Guy Armina Rice Name Spot.
Okay.
I live on Marlboro Central Elementary School. Class size, obviously very important. Our school is the bottom 1% in poorness, number two, and then it's number two and it has the most English learners in the school. So we were thinking maybe we could use that stimulus money that we heard talked about at the last meeting to keep the class size small. Do you understand that? Okay. I've got 44 signatures of people at the school that feel the same way we do. I'll just turn that over to you. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Martha. Vengo de la Escuela Central, representando a los alumnos.
If you can just wait just a minute, we have a translator come up. He's right behind you. He's right, he's right here. Thank you.
I'll be translating. Sure, no problem.
Vengo representando a los niños de la Escuela Central. Perdón, estoy un poco nerviosa, pero sí quisiera decirles lo más importante, que la educación es la principal herramienta que podemos darle a nuestros hijos para que sean personas de éxito. Ellos pueden realizarse como profesionistas y no es posible que año tras año se les quite presupuesta la educación de nuestros hijos, que ellos son el futuro de, del país, los futuros presidentes, maestros, profesionistas. Debemos preservar a nuestros maestros para que ellos puedan darles esas herramientas a nuestros hijos. Los invito a que vengan a ver el trabajo que hacen en nuestros salones, de esta manera puedan ver el efecto que tendrá el aumentar el tamaño de, de los más alumnos en los salones de clases. En cada salón, por favor, no les fallen a nuestros hijos, que es lo más importante, ellos, ellos. Mis hijos han estado aquí, perdón por lo que voy a decir, pero una de mis hijas estuvo aquí dolor de cabeza porque no sabía el inglés, lo que venimos es aprendiendo inglés primero. Mi hijo siempre ha estado aquí, le digo, mi hijo, tú puedes, hay que salir adelante para poder llegar a ser alguien en la vida.
My name is Richard, translating from Ms. Moreno.
The mic's not on. There's something wrong with the mic.
Yes, she wants to speak. Okay.
Speaking from Ms. Moreno to translate what she said. The education is a principal tool that we can give our children in today's age. They are the future for our society, the future presidents, the future board members, the future teachers. We're asking you today to preserve our class sizes, to preserve our teachers. They are the only ones that can give our students the tools that they need to be successful in the future. We invite you to come out to Central, to other schools, to see that the work that teachers are doing in our classrooms, to see what they're doing in those rooms, how successful they're being. Only then will you be able to see the true impact of increasing class size in each room. Please, we ask you today not to fail our students and make the right decisions for our students today. Thank you.
Me reconozco a todos los maestros, porque sin ellos no hubieran profesionistas.
We want to support our teachers, because without them, we wouldn't have any professional people today. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, members of the board and Dr. Greer. I'm Libby Montaña, and I live at 4611 Van Dyke Avenue, and I teach first grade at Central Elementary. And I'm here to speak about what it's like being a teacher in a class size of 15 kids. I've taught in San Francisco, I've taught in North Carolina, Durham, North Carolina, and now in San Diego, always in underserved communities. And every day as teachers, we make decisions about where we are going to put our resources, who we are going to check in with every day, what small group we're going to pull, who we're going to, who we're going to be able to conference with. And when one is in a class size of 15, I'm able, when I'm, I'm able to check in with Joshua in the morning about how his day is going to go. I'm able to introduce a new book to Juan Diego every single day because he needs that. I'm able to pull Salvador and Jesse to do a little bit of 15 minutes of word work because that's what they need. Central Elementary is a school that serves families who are not part of the culture of power. All the kids in my class, 100%, are second language learners, and I feel like the ethical decision is to keep that school at 15 to 1. It makes a difference. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Greer. I'm Cindy Martin, the principal from Central Elementary, and I'm here tonight to thank you, Dr. Greer, for offering a solution that in my six years at Central has been, allowed me to get the most promising results I've ever seen with the children at our school. I'm asking the board tonight to act responsibly using the stimulus dollars to be able to continue a program that's showing extremely positive results with our population. The solution is something that we are now showing in kindergarten, 85% proficiency. I know that when you commit dollars to the right place in a way that you can track, you will be able to show results. Dr. Greer presented our ability to use these monies in the way that they were intended. If we don't use them in the way they were intended, for the lowest 5%, we lose the opportunity to go for this race for the top dollars later, two years down the road. We are asking for the ability to continue on this path and showing the results. I stand here committed to being able to provide the board with quarterly measures showing how this is actually significantly impacting the student achievement at our school. These dollars have specific purposes, and we have a solution that actually works. Please act responsibly before July 1st, so I don't have to take a staff of 43 committed teachers that are at a hard-to-staff elementary school and ask 15 of them to leave. Thank you.
Cheryl, I think I'm supposed to be speaking without the vice principal allocation. So should I just wait till then?
Are you there too? Okay, you can wait till then.
Yeah, I'll just wait.
Yes, thank you. Both of you?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay. I'll call that list next. Mike Jimenez, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I went to that list. Monique Robinson. Okay. Billie Dunbar. Okay. Are you on this list too? So let's do this principals' presentation. Mr. McGurk, you bring your whole team up, all of the people that are there. Should I call out 25 names? You have 20 minutes for your presentation. Please come up. Bruce McGurk, Michael Dodson, Stephanie Barr, Sarah Sullivan, Margaret Johnson, Patricia Led, Judy Martell, Listy Gerlman, Sheila Martin, Betsy Cook, Mike George. I still don't, Mike, I still don't see your name on this list, Mike. He's gonna, okay.
At least they're on the agenda properly.
Good evening. My name is Bruce McGurk, the Director of AASD, President Jackson, Vice President Barrera, board members, Dr. Greer. Thank you for your decision earlier to rehire all of the current vice principals. But the fact remains, less than five years ago, there were over 68 elementary school vice principals, 42 middle school vice principals, and 42 high school vice principals, over 150 total. Each year since then, vice principal positions have been eliminated. Next year's proposal of 76 total vice principals represents a 50% reduction in less than five years. When you eliminate a vice principal position, unless the employee who held that position is promoted to principal, that person is reassigned to the classroom. When vice principals return to the classroom, over 90% of their VP salary savings is offset by their teacher's salary. Faced with the current dilemma of excess teachers, wouldn't it be more cost-effective to reinstate former vice principals? Reinstiting the 30 vice principal FTEs would reduce the number of excess teachers at a cost of less than $300,000, but the benefits to the school would be priceless. The goal of the principals, vice principals, teachers, parents, and students speaking before you today is to restore VP cuts by sharing with you the stories of these indispensable people.
Good evening, President Jackson and members of the board and Dr. Greer. My name is Michael Dodson, and I'm the principal at Bell Middle School. Some of you know that up until two years ago, Bell had a reputation of being a very dangerous and unsafe place. Last year, Bell had co-principals, a full-time campus police officer, and three vice principals. Last year's Bell reputation began to change. We put our students in uniforms, we implemented a zero tolerance policy for each and every student who came to school to disrupt learning. This year, our campus lost a second principal, our full-time campus police officer, and our third VP. The decision to take a second VP away from any middle school, in effect, makes that school an unsafe place for students and staff. Bell ended up this year with over 1,300 students. Over 200 of those students have IEPs. Almost a quarter of those students are identified as ED or emotionally disturbed. All that combined with the fact that Keeler and O'Farrow disenroll up to 40 of their students with behavioral issues a year right around the semester break, makes Bell a dangerous campus or an unsafe campus. Middle school students face more challenges than any other student in the K-12 system. With fewer administrators, it would take the students, it wouldn't take the students long to figure out that they can get away with more of their poor choices. Stand by for an increase in all areas of inappropriate behavior. A decision that is made just on student bodies alone is unfair and unjust. Every middle school that is affected by this decision has just become a much lesser of a safe environment for students as well as staff. Please maintain the original VP allocation. Thank you.
Just be, just be clear, you have 20 minutes total. When the buzzer goes off, you're done. Even if people, somebody talks longer or shorter, you only got 20 minutes.
Good evening and thank you for your guys' attention. Obviously, the reality of the situation that my colleagues are stating here is that the vice principals, along with every other position, is vital and is a crucial position. We're speaking on behalf of campus safety. If you were to ask any student that had a problem on any of our campuses, and we do have a lot of students, and if you were to ask any teacher, and we have a lot of teachers, if you were to ask any classified staff member, any counselor, any parent, who was the go-to person, guy or gal, for these problems, I guarantee you, we come in at a very strong first or a strong second. So I caution that when we make this decision, and if this decision is made to change these allocations, what kind of a backup plan do you have to support all of those members that need us in all these situations when we talk about campus safety, campus supervision, test administration, professional development, and just basically all the odds and ends? Because we are definitely wearing a lot of different hats. We wear a lot of different hats, and a lot of those other members only wear one hat. And so we just wanted to make sure that you guys reiterate that our principals need us, the community needs us, and making that cut would definitely hurt your community.
A friend of mine is a head football coach. The success of his football program is based upon winning, and he has a very winning team. When I talk to him about the success of his team, he never takes the spotlight. He always gives credit to his assistant coaches and his players. He knows that he could never win any games alone. At Challenger, our principal is our head coach. The vice principals are her assistant coaches, and currently, we're on a winning streak. We are closing the achievement gap for all our subgroups, our teachers are building collaborative teams of excellence, and our students are making gains. The success is due to leadership. We have a winning leadership team. The campus is safe, the teachers can teach, our students are learning, we are strengthening our community of learners. My friend, the head coach, would never sacrifice a win. He would never walk into a game and set himself up to lose. We cannot sacrifice our students. We cannot sacrifice our teachers, and we cannot set ourselves up to lose. Don't dismantle our winning team. Maintain the original VP allocation, please.
Sarah Sullivan, principal of Pershing Middle School. In the last nine years, I've worked for seven years with two VPs and two years with one VP. I want to talk a moment about how we ensure a safe campus. I want to talk a moment about how we ensure a safe campus, a calm, safe campus. We mount a zone defense. We have one person who's on-call, who manages the unscheduled events that happen so that the other people can attend to all of the important events that we have scheduled. All the schools need at least two administrators, one to be on-call and one to be managing what we are supposed to be doing, teaching and organizing and leading our campus around the improvement of instruction. Larger campuses need more than two. I encourage you to consider maintaining the original allocation. Thank you.
Good evening. One commitment I have made as a Challenger middle school principal is to preserve instructional time. Teachers are provided an optimal learning environment free from interruptions, collaborative planning, analyzing data, developing common assessments, and responding to students' needs has resulted in Challenger's success. Challenger Middle School has been identified as a 2009 distinguished school. We have an adjusted API of eight-fifty and a state rank and similar school rank of nine-ten. Challenger Middle School is a learning community where teachers can teach and work together to improve their practice. During this past year, due to an unfortunate circumstance, one vice principal was out for four weeks. During this time, the administrative gaps were filled. Safety and supervision could not be ignored, nor could communication with parents and community, but filling these gaps exhausted all resources. Something had to give. Support for teachers waned. The piece that suffered was the support for teachers as they worked to analyze their Benchmark III data and determine needs of their students for the rest of the year. The reduction of one VP put a huge strain on the system. Teachers stepped up to help voluntarily and went out of their way to support school operations during the temporary absence. This was in direct conflict with Challenger's and my colleagues' shared belief that student achievement is the primary focus for all staff. I cannot and will not expect teachers to do this on a daily basis. It is unreasonable to ask teachers to do the job of administrators. If the district does reduce the VP allocation at middle schools, who will take on the work? Please maintain the original formula for VPs.
My name is Patricia Ladd at Correa Middle School, and I have Mr. Howard Justice parent. I would like for you to hear a parent's perspective, and I will email you my one-minute speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Greer, President Jackson, honorable board members. Again, as Mrs. Ladd said, my name is Howard Justice. I'm a parent of three children in the Point Loma cluster, and I'm here to speak today on this VP allocation issue. I want to acknowledge the daunting task before you today of making the unwanted and unpopular budget cuts. Undoubtedly, each of the speakers that have come, that will come before you today, many that have previously come, have their own special interest, and I am no different. Do not lose focus on the core objective of educating our children. There are certain items being included in the latest round of budget cuts that are necessities, and certain items that are not being cut that are luxuries. Do not allow certain enrichment programs, no matter how valuable, to append upon the basic core education function. Specifically, I question the reasonableness of saving three-point-four million dollars by limiting thirty vice principal positions, while there are still other options that will save more money and will not directly impact our children's daily experience. I don't need to go into the importance of the VP position roles. Certainly, the speakers before me will have touched on that, the ones after me again certainly will. I will say that it is these VP people that touch our children's lives every day, every hour of every school day. On the other hand, I note that certain programs, such as the OCIL program, that was once scheduled to be eliminated, are still in the budget at an annual cost of seven-point-five million dollars. That's more than twice the amount that's being saved, the three-point-four billion dollars being saved by the elimination of these thirty positions. I note with interest that in the 2010-2011 budget, that this program is again on the chopping block. Again, I think that no matter how important and how beneficial these enrichment programs are, we cannot afford the luxury, in this current economic environment that we are in, to continue to maintain these programs at the expense of our core educational experience. Please do not jeopardize the quality of our children's education while protecting somebody sacred cow. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Betsy Cook. I'm the principal at Marston Middle School. Today, I'm here to specifically talk about the impact a reduction in vice principals will have on special education services, using Marston Middle School as an example. Currently, three administrators, two vice principals and myself, see to the needs of a thousand students at Marston. One-hundred-and-fifty-three of those students have individualized education plans. In a nutshell, those one-hundred-and-fifty-three students must have an IEP meeting every year. Virtually all of those meetings exceed an hour in length. An administrator's physical presence is required. Prior to the meeting or after, there are additional considerations to meet the unique needs of each of these students: conferring with case managers, conversations with parents, research, phone calls to acquire services and resources, proactive and reactive behavior intervention plans, manifestation hearings, and the ubiquitous paperwork. Even with the least needy special education student, this adds at least another hour, and typically twice that for each of those students, required of an administrator. This conservative effort estimate of administrative time for our one-hundred-and-fifty-three students brings the total to a minimum of three-hundred-and-six hours each year over one-hundred-and-eighty-four days. The work is already a profound challenge. To do it with less administrative support is breathtaking. Please maintain the current vice principal formula in middle schools. Our special education students need and deserve it. Thank you.
I'm Chris Hargreaves, principal at Maryland's Middle School, and I provided you with a list of responsibilities that our vice principals and myself share. These duties and responsibilities are not going to go away. They will be absorbed by either myself or the other vice principal. What I'm here to speak about are the emotional needs of the students that we work with on a daily basis. I feel it's critical to understand the developmental challenges between youth and adulthood that are specific to middle school students. Beyond the classroom, our students face an often emotionally stressful social landscape while struggling to acquire the skills necessary for independence. Increases in hormones and its effects on their behaviors are a hallmark of adolescents. Promoting increases in age-related social behavior, risk-taking, novelty-seeking, all of which can have serious life-changing effects. Reductions in structure and positive incentive values can lead adolescents to pursue reinforcement through drug use and other risk-taking behaviors. Insurance is so pivotal in the development path of our students. It is at this point, much of their lives are determined by their emerging self-image, the narrow and precarious development of both their independence and self-control. They are starting to understand some of life's choices and often choose based on the social consequences. We must not overlook the powerful effect of positive incentive in these choices, and how providing the critical support and protective environment is essential to their development and will allow them to face the perilous challenges and opportunities of the future. Our vice principals do this for our children every day.
My name is Julia Dilema, and I am a student representative from Wilson Middle School. At our school, we have a few vice principals, but they have a tremendous impact at our school, and you can see the fruit of their labor by how peaceful and conductive the campus is. Although I'll be in high school next year, I know how tumultuous and overwhelming middle school can be. Vice principals are important generally, but in middle school and to middle school students, they are essential. These are the years where I began developing mentally and physically, and unsurprisingly, in the midst of all that, there were a few malfunctions. But I guess, in that aspect, I am a moderate case. Every day, I saw other students frustrated with their changes and acting out as an outlet of their frustration. The vice principals were the ones that dealt with this, and they taught us how to vent and deal in a more healthy fashion. Point being, middle schools are a lot safer with vice principals, and students are going through an unstable phase, and I feel a lot safer with more eyes out to ensure my safety and others around me.
Hello, my name is Melanie Hague, and I'm here to represent Wilson Middle School. I'm not one voice, but I am many, and I will be living in Wilson next year for high school, but that doesn't slack my concern about vice principals being budget-cutted. I live in a less fortunate neighborhood, which leads kids to act out in class. I get attention, which leads to disruption in class time. My VIPs at school help most with safety and behavior problems. My classmates and I have the essentials for a proper future. Not only do they help our behalf for learning, they help support our teachers. When a student acts out, has no time, the VIPs are there to support us, the child support us. Thank you, and please don't budget-cut the VIPs of our school. They are not VIPs, they are VIPs. Thank you, and have a great day.
Good evening, board members, President Sheila Jackson, and Dr. Greer. My name is Jonathan Ton, and I am the principal at Montgomery Middle School. I stand before you this evening, along with my colleagues, to urge you to carefully reconsider your decisions to eliminate vice principal positions from the schools because they will have profound negative effects on the learning communities based on what you already heard. Please do the right thing for our staff and students and maintain the original VP allocation. As well, in the interest of time, I have brought one community member from our site so that you can hear from the front line of what it's like to work at a school site that's challenged as ours.
Mr. Davis.
My name is James Davis. I'm the community representative at Montgomery Middle School, and I was raised myself and completely through the public education system. And in the public education system, the letter "E" stands for one thing: excellence, which I hope that we'll be able to grade the members of the board on in their wisdom in deciding how to allocate the money. And I do recognize, being in business myself, that it's extremely challenging to do this. On the other hand, in researching this, I went back to the fundamentals of what it is that you had in mind when you created the position of vice principal. And in my research, I went back to a document in 2003 where you outlined the duties of a vice principal. And it was extremely interesting, and I'd like you to...I'm just going to mention a few of these duties. There's actually seventeen duties listed, and I was extremely surprised by the breadth and the depth of some of these duties. But after each duty, there was a large letter "E" which I couldn't figure out what it meant. And I want you to think, while I'm describing just a few of these, I'm not going to describe all seventeen, I don't have time, but just try to think what this "E" could mean. First, it's to confer with pupils, parents, teachers, law enforcement officers, and representatives of social welfare agencies to resolve serious pupil academic attendance and behavior problems. Second, plan, organize, and supervise program of extracurricular activities, including athletic, social activities, music, dream activities, student government assemblies, contests, and publications. They said time, so, etc. But after each specific duty is the letter "E," if anybody can think of what that might mean, because this is your own document. Essential. That means you can't do without it. And I'm going to give this to you for your recommendation.
It's unfortunate you will not get to hear from some of the secondary, the middle schools. All of these administrators came together with a deep plea in their heart for the safety and for the necessity of having added bodies at the school for the safety of the kids. I'm going to provide to you a list, it's just a partial list, some of the tasks you expect your principals to accomplish with or without a vice principal. And unless you've walked in a principal shoe, you have no idea of the rigor of the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Myra Pedrona Melendez, Melanie Hague, Julia...Melanie already spoke, she's different. Okay, very good. Some people were on the sheet, and some people...okay.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Greer and President Jackson. My name is Myra Pedrono Melendez, vice principal at Montgomery Middle, a PI-V school. At Montgomery, the admin and instructional teams have been able to carry out our vision to work hand-in-hand with our learning community in order to increase our students' academic growth. As a VP, my job is comprehensive, and it is exhausting, and it is definitely well-worth it. I can assure you that the daily successes of our school don't happen on their own. If the VP position is eliminated, it will be at the expense of students' learning. Safety will be compromised, focused learning and teaching will be at risk, and the workload of other members of the school, including teachers, will be impacted negatively. The principal will take on evaluation of the entire staff, not just part, testing, parent and community relations, discipline, staff development, special ed compliance, and all other operational duties that now fall under the responsibility of the VP. Issues will trickle down to the classroom, and everything we have worked so hard to achieve and to maintain will begin to suffer as instruction, school culture, and school environment begin to take a backseat. I pray that this board has the vision not to jeopardize what has already been created and what needs to be nurtured in order to continue its success. Please keep the original VP allocations. Thank you.
Julia Dilema, Roy Ruffin, or Ray Ruffin, Jim Davis. Are these people in the room?
Just spoke.
Okay. Oh, okay. Sarah Andrew, I think it is. Francisco Hardilinton. And Anne Steinberger.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Greer and President Jackson. My name is Sandra Andrew. I am a special education teacher at Montgomery Middle School. I am aware of the budget difficulties that face this board. Many options have been discussed to address our current budget situation that would not impact the heart of our learning communities. Many of the schools that will be impacted by the loss of vice principals are program improvement schools. I was on our program improvement committee last year, and one of the positions that we felt was very important to us to implement and maintain the monitoring of the program improvement plan at our site was the position of vice principal. As a special educator, I'm concerned that one administrator would not be able to meet the needs of all of our IEP students and attend all of our IEPs. As teachers, we are being asked to differentiate instruction to meet the needs of all students in our schools. In keeping with what is being asked of teachers, as board members, looking at what's happening, it would be, we need to weight the same things and look at sites as their individual needs. Thank you.
Louis Aguilar.
Anne Steinberger.
Oh, I called you earlier, okay.
Yes, I'd like Dr. Garcia to read what we want to say from Roosevelt, please.
That's fine. She has a minute.
President Jackson, members of the board, Superintendent Greer. My name is Carmen Garcia, and I'm the principal of Roosevelt IB Middle School. I'm standing here with my two wonderful VPs, my right and left hand respectively, Francisco Santos and Marcia Dudley, and behind me are some wonderful Roosevelt students and wonderful Roosevelt parents. And we are here in support of the original two vice principal allocation awarded to our school at the beginning of the budget process. Our school team, VPs, teachers, parents, and community members has been instrumental in our school's return to glory. In just one year, we have drastically reduced discipline referrals by sixty-one percent, reduced suspensions by fifty percent, eliminated in-school suspension, and increased attendance. Our kids are in school and in the classroom, receiving a high-quality education. We've exited state monitoring, we've grown by thirty-five points on the API, and improved our API rankings to a nine in similar schools' ranking. We're at the cusp of greatness, but losing a VP will thwart or slow down this effort. As an IB school, we teach our students to see the world through five areas of interaction. One of them, health and social education, speaks to the importance of reflecting on and making choices while understanding and being cognizant of the specific needs. We know that you will do the same. Please maintain the two VP allocation. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis Aguilar here.
Good evening. My name is Louis Aguilar. I work at the IMC Center refurbishments department. I wasn't going to speak, so I don't really have anything prepared, but looking at the budgets, there's a few I just want to touch upon. The wage rollbacks, the four-day furlough, the Kaiser Insurance slash Pacific Pay, the copay from five dollars to twenty dollars, the frozen steps, and column reduction. I was just wondering, are any of these items I just mentioned going to pertain to any of you also? Are you going to follow upon that? Are you going to follow upon that to the T exactly all four or five steps, five items? And are your wages also going to be frozen? No behind-the-door deals, things that we won't even know upon about? And I just hope in September I won't find a layoff notice on my desk because of the things I just said. Thank you.
You won't. Yes.
My name is Earlene Dunbar, and I'm the program manager for the elementary counseling and guidance department. My heart has been with you as you've struggled with these very difficult financial decisions. I'm glad I'm not one of the people up there having to make the decisions. It must be dreadful to have one person after another come and beg you to reinstate what they're losing, so I will spare you that. With all due respect, though, as you attempt to make the best choices in regards to closing the budget deficit, I must be, I would be remiss if I did not speak up as an advocate for children and explain the impact that moving forward with the reduction of twenty-six point two, I believe it was, elementary positions for counseling. I was so enthused and excited with the prospect that the initial proposal was to allocate two and a half days a minimum at every elementary school, only to have that enthusiasm thwarted. Not only are you losing the twenty-six point two positions, but because principals didn't realize this was going to happen before they submitted their budget books, a lot more time, counseling time, has been eliminated throughout the elementary sites. What I have passed out is the results of one of the two federal grants the counseling department has been working with for the past five years. The first grant ended last year, and the next grant won't end until July, so I don't have the data for that. But as you go through this presentation that was put together by our external evaluator, you will see the impact that if we have realistic counseling ratios for children, we can dramatically impact student attendance, student discipline, and student API scores.
Thank you.
I urge you that with any extra monies that may come, that you seriously consider reinstating that minimum balance. Currently, our ratios are one to two thousand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fernando Rivera, Rivers. Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Richard Barrera, Mr. Charlie Evans, and board members. I'm here supporting Central Elementary. I'm the parent of a nine-year-old boy who attends Central Elementary. And I feel that by increasing the number of students, it's just going to make us worse than ever. That's my personal belief. It's going to make us look like a third-world country, which is, you know, where some of us come from, you know, from third-world countries, you know, where they have more than twenty students in each classroom. I think that you should do anything and everything that is possible to stop, you know, just the plan of increasing the number of students. That's just going to make it hard for our children to learn, you know, it's going to decrease the quality of learning and teaching, you know, because teachers are not going to have the time that they do have now to teach our children. And I also would ask you to not eliminate the nurses or cut back, because my son is, he has diabetes type one, and he needs special care twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And he's, you know, chances are, he might have a diabetic attack anytime. It could happen to anybody who is diabetic. So therefore, I would ask you to do anything that you can do to keep the nurses at Central Elementary and to keep classes with fifteen students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board members, I'd like for us to, if it's okay, to address how we're going to close the shortfall for 2011 first, then the budget, and finally, the resolution. If that's okay to the rest of the board members. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, we can discuss this, and I guess for the sake of conversation, and I have a lot more to say about this, about what this means, but in terms of reaching the eighty-five million, the sixty-four million in 2010, 2011, and eighty-five, so that we're covered also for 2011, 2012, I would propose that we, as a block, go down the list until we reach that number, which takes us through number nineteen, and then it takes us partway through number twenty. So number twenty, rather than eleven point five, would be reduced down to seven point two.
So is your motion, you want to do it individually, or is it?
No, my motion is to take those as a group to meet the eighty-five million dollars.
So the motion is to take everything from line one to line seventeen, sorry, line?
No, through line nineteen, and then adding on line twenty, which instead of eleven point five would be seven point two, so a partial reduction.
Partial of line, okay.
So that's my motion, I have a lot more to say about it.
Is there a second to that motion, which is to take everything from line one to line nineteen, and a portion of line twenty to the amount of seven point two million? Can I get a second for that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second for that motion, okay. Board members, do you want to talk about it?
Okay, just, first of all, before discussing this, I think everybody needs to understand when we're looking at, we've balanced the budget for 29, 2010, when we're looking at the following two years, that we are in a very crazy situation, and we just, everyone needs to be aware of this, that we are being required to balance the budget the second and third year in the future, that we're required by the state, at the same time, the state is not making us any promises about how much money they are going to give us. So I think we need to be clear about that. And as an example, we can look to what happened just during this budget year. In March, we were required to submit a balanced budget for the 9-10 year with, without adequate information of what the state was going to give us, and that's why people referred to all the drastic cuts that were on the list in March that we had to approve at that time. And I think you can see what we did between March and June was pretty dramatic in terms of finding other ways. People talked about Plan A and Plan B, we basically found a way of Plan C to cut the budget in lots of ways, and you're very aware of the different cuts that we've made, especially in central office and transportation and other areas for next year. So I just want you to know that when we're putting these on the list, this is what's required by the state for us to balance the budget, and you need to understand that as we approve this on June thirtieth, that on July first, we will begin working to do everything possible to not make those cuts, because we will have twelve months to work on that. We're projecting out twelve months in the future, basically looking at the worst-case scenario and seeing what we can do in the meantime. So I think that's what everybody really needs to understand as far as what this process is.
Mr. Barrera, please.
Yeah, I agree with what Dr. Evans is saying. Again, what we're taking action on tonight is actually balancing our 2009-10 budget, balancing our budget for the coming year. And then what we're required to do is to make a projection that if nothing changes, that we're going to, you know, balance our budget in the 2010-11 year, one year out, and the 2011-12 year, two years out. And I absolutely agree with Dr. Evans that the work of balancing our 2010-11 budget has to begin July first, has to begin right away, and we're going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we intend to do about that a little bit later in the agenda. In terms of 2009-10, though, this coming year, and some of the things that we've been hearing from folks tonight, I think it's important to understand a couple of issues. One is, when we talk about the allocation of counselors and the allocation of vice principals, it's extremely important, I believe, that we prioritize the allocation to schools that are in the most need of counselors and vice principals. And I understand that every school makes a valid argument that they're in need of counselors and vice principals. Some schools are in more need of counselors and vice principals than others, and in the way that we go through and make these allocation decisions for the coming year, it's going to be extremely important, and I think the superintendent is going to come to us with some recommendations about how we make those allocations. But middle schools, for instance, you know, with high percentages of, you know, kids in special ed, free and reduced lunch, English language learners, are going to need their allocation of at least two vice principals. Elementary schools facing the same issue are going to need their allocation of counselors. And so we've got decisions to make about how we allocate the positions that we have, and I think it's very important that we prioritize. We also have the, are going to have the opportunity to make allocations of additional Title I money coming from the federal stimulus. And again, we have to very much prioritize the use of that money to the schools that are most in need of support. And I think that by doing that, by focusing our allocation of additional Title I money, I think we're going to be able to offset some of the cuts in some of the class size increases that we're seeing, and some of the, we're going to be able to mitigate some of the need for schools to access teachers that are, you know, that are part of your team. So I think we've got solutions in front of us for the 9-10 year in terms of the allocation of counselors and vice principals to the schools most in need, and in terms of decisions about how to spend our additional Title I money. But having said that, the need to make these projections for the 2010-11 and 11-12 years are real. We've got to do that today, and we've got to understand that it's our job as an entire community to start taking action July first, so that we're not in a position that we've got to make some of the devastating cuts that are on our list tonight.
Mr. Kamara, please.
I think that I'm not going to be able to support any of this. I have to say that the entire process, while we've struggled, and we've had sixteen meetings, and we've had our staff work heroically, I want to thank the finance department, I want to thank the superintendent, our legal counsel, so many different levels have struggled through with this. But it is, I think, in education, we tend to think that, you know, the political process will take care of itself, and that everyone cares about the kids, which, you know, I think the prioritization of these funds could be done better, and I've been and remain very disappointed. There are tough decisions to be made, there are hard decisions that need to be made, but for me, what happens, I think, in our schools for our children's education has to come first. I don't think it's fair to ask some teachers to take a twenty-four to one classroom size while others are taking fifteen to one. I just don't really believe that that's fair. I don't believe it's fair. I don't believe, I don't believe it's fair to not approve textbooks for some teachers, that they're going to have to have economics teachers, English teachers, American literature teachers. Just this year, we're not approving textbooks. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's a decision that's in the interest of our children, our economics textbook. The kids don't even going to be able to study the Euro. It's, by the time we come around to prove it again for the next allocation, who knows how old it's going to be. Twenty-five percent reduction in supplies, when our kids come into school in September, I don't even think that they really understand. I don't think, I know our principals don't understand what that's going to mean in their budgets, and it is not putting our kids first. It's not putting the money where we think it ought to be going. And we're going to turn to our communities, and we're going to pull our pockets out and say, gee, we didn't have any choice in doing this. And that's, I don't believe is simply not true. I don't believe it's true. Counselors, we've already mentioned all of that. You know, vice principals, we've had a very well-organized group come up and explain to us, that put themselves on the agenda, didn't come in, didn't hijack the agenda, didn't stand in the back of the room, you know, what were the terms with, and talk about fairness, honesty, and openness, and then come in and hijack and try and humiliate the superintendent. You know, we had a group of principals who came up responsibly and voiced their concerns and talked about what their real needs are within this district, and talked with integrity, tried to persuade with reason and with facts, you know, and these are the people that we're going to eliminate from our schools. I find that be something that I really, I really cannot support. We talk about an optimal learning environment, well, that's for all children. And when we say that, you know, some schools are more equal than others, I'm sorry, but that sounds like a book, Something Aligned from 1984, that we've all read in school. Some schools, I believe that it can't be all poverty all the time, and while there may be a need for a weighted school formula, I'm very concerned that we haven't decided on a basic formula for our schools that really work with regard to our ratios for employment. When we have a hundred and eighty-six teachers that we don't have a place for within the district, but we're going to keep them anyway, I think that that's a mistake. I believe that is, we have, we have cut three hundred and twenty-six administrators, we have cut hundreds of classified staff, we have reduced here, there, and everywhere except, and Ms. Ward, would you please put up page five of the PowerPoint presentation for the budget, please? We have cut everywhere except here. We've had no support whatsoever. We've looked at districts up and down the state of California that have, where the unions and the district have worked together and made some really tough discussions. We haven't touched any of this. Not a drop of this has helped with this budget. There has been no outreach with honesty, openness, and fairness in discussing this, and instead, what we're doing is we're undercutting the budget of our children's education, the future of our community and the future of our society, and then we're going to turn to this community, and we're going to say, I'm sorry, but, you know, we're going to hold you hostage, and instead, if you'll go back to page four, Ms. Ward, or whomever's in charge of this, we're going to cut, and we're going to cut all of these programs instead. Instead of all of us joining hands and trying to figure this out, we are going to cut all of these programs. I don't think that makes a whole lot of sense. It's the fabric of our society, it is, are the future of our children. I can't support, and I can't subscribe to this. I just simply, my priorities are in a different place. But again, I come back to the political process. I think there are special interests that got this board elected, and they got what they paid for, and I have to admit, they've done a very good job of that. So those of you that don't want to participate in the political process, or don't believe that school board members matter much more than dog catchers, please remember this day, and please remember that in your budget in September, because the priorities of this board, I believe, are completely misplaced. We've got one foot in reality, and we have another foot way off base, and I believe that that's going to come back in the analysis from this Board of Education as far as when we submit this board, when we submit, excuse me, this budget, you know, through no fault of the staff, through actually a superb job for the superintendent trying to give us options, trying to give us a plate of opportunities and discussions. We have a superintendent that knows how to do this. We have a superintendent who is one of the best in the country, but when people won't listen, or when people shut doors, or when people unroll lengths of signatures for something that really, if you actually read what the teachers signed, the piece of paper that they were given for what they were signing, and read what it said, it doesn't sound like anything that what was represented up here at this dais. So I think we have the ability to figure this out. We're a pretty darn smart community, we're one of the most- We're a pretty darn smart community, we're one of the most educated communities in the United States, and it's my opinion, we can do better than this.
Mr. Ebert.
Well, I too will not vote for this, and there's some good reasons. I find it interesting that there's furloughs for classified employees, but none for teachers. There's elimination of health techs, when they're probably the only person around in some schools to help the kids in the nurses' office, when the nurses were already decimated in the past. I also find that another classified group that I'm worried about is our library tech twos. You know, if I go down this list on page four and five, I find priorities that are, for me, that are different than those on this list. Since I'm not going to engineer the whole mess, I'm just not going to support this recommendation, because I think there's things in here that are hypocrisy. For example, increase the class size reduction when we have surplus teachers. The solution to this is not, we're not going to lose teachers, which would be the normal thing you do when you increase class sizes. What you're doing is you're increasing class sizes in certain schools, and other schools are going to get small class sizes accordingly. There's nobody going to go away. I mean, if you increase class sizes, it says here, first grade is 80 full-time equivalents. Those 80 people are not going to be laid off, they're still employed. They're going to go to some other school to reduce class size. So this is a selective approval of a class size decrease for some schools, and an increase for other schools at their expense. I'm just, I just don't agree with that. I think that we need to look at this whole budget differently. You know, I don't, I think you have to look at this line all the way down to 17. I do not say that this action takes any action against VPs, that's not in this motion. I can see that. But nevertheless, if I had to say the difference between, let's say, having a vice principal at a site or having a health tech, I don't know if I could go that route. So, you know, I'm basically saying, this doesn't fit my priorities, and I'm voting no. That's it.
Before we do the next round, I'd like to make a few comments. This has been a very difficult process, very long process, and everyone has been able to come up and give a comment. Different doesn't mean necessarily better. People are entitled to think differently. This district has been challenged to think differently. Wasn't necessarily challenged just by the superintendent, it was challenged by the board members. And I do applaud the staff, because I know we have worked in very long hours, so I do applaud you, and I do thank you. But this budget deficit, as I've said many times, is real. It is real. We do not have funding as we used to have. Many times, people, the first mantra whenever something comes up is lay off the teachers. But we all know that in September, when school starts back, the first thing that we have to do is hire the teachers back. And this board made a commitment that we were not going to play that shell game. We were going to put everything on the table. Now, some people don't like that, because that is transparency. But they would say, we want transparency, but not that transparency. Some people will complain about what this will do to our district. It is no doubt that our district will be different. But we have also said we'll be leaner, we'll be more effective, we'll be more efficient, because I believe that every employee that we have in this district, like this Board of Education, is committed to excellence. Committed to excellence don't mean that when you don't have the funds, you go somewhere and sit down. Committed to excellence means that during this time of economic crisis, which is not going to go away, didn't go away this year, it's not going to go away next year, and we probably have it for at least a couple of more years. It means that we find ways to make sure that our district remains strong. Yes, we will have some class sizes increased. Yes, we will take funds, categorical funds, that are intended for our needy students, Title I funds, and help those class sizes stay low. That is not saying that we are not being equitable across this district. What it says is that we're using the money, our categorical funds, that we can't use any other way, the correct way. I applaud everyone, not just the principals, the teachers, the community members, everyone that came forward over the last few months to voice their concerns. But the realization is, is this budget has to be done. It has to be turned in on the 30th. And I think Mr. Barrera spoke to it earlier, and Dr. Evans, the fact is that what we have to project is how, how we will balance our budget in the year of 10-11. We will start on July 1, as we did this year, looking at other ways to fund it. Sometimes we forget that for the last few months, we've had everyone down here on the lawn. Everyone. Bappa was down here, Athletix was down here, Music was down here, but we've managed to do the 2010 budget without having to make those deep cuts. Our commitment to you has been that we would try to keep the cuts as far away from the classroom as possible. We have not lost sight of our vision, and that is to provide each and every one of our students with the best education possible. So I welcome the comments from my peers. I know this is different, it's different thinking, but we are going to keep pushing this district. We combined a lot of departments, we're going to combine some more departments. But when it all ends, we will have a balanced budget. We will not go into receivership, as some have tried to indicate. But what we will be is stronger, leaner, and for the people that came to see me, greener in the future. Dr. Evans, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say, one thing that I agree with Ms. Nakamura about, is that I am very strongly opposed to all of these cuts on the 2010-11, 2011-12 list. I am definitely opposed to all of those cuts. On the 2009-10 budget that we have balanced, I was in favor of some of the cuts and not in favor of others. The reality is that this board has saved more money and made cuts without affecting the classroom than has ever been done before. Now, the deficit kept rising in terms of the state, and so we certainly did have to step into the classroom to a certain extent, and some of the issues, particularly in terms of the class size. I think that one thing that is really important, and it needs to be made very clear tonight, all five board members and Superintendent Greer do care about the education of the children in this community. I very strongly oppose board members, such as Ms. Nakamura, who are implying that somehow she cares about kids and other people do not care about kids. As you said, we can have a civil and polite discussion, disagreements about how to balance the budget, but we don't need to do it with accusation that there are people who do not care about the kids. Public education is what has made this country great. Public education has been the great equalizer in this country. We have certainly learned years ago that to have equal education, it's not going to be the same in every community, that not every community has the same needs. We want to put our children on a level playing field, so that they can use their opportunities and become the best that they can become. So it's not always going to be the same all around. Now, there's certain things that are thrown out here about, which we really need to correct, that there are these excess teachers that we are keeping on, we do not need. This is false. We have plenty of places to use these teachers, and we are not going to spend any extra money from our budget. Last year, for example, the school district laid off 900 teachers, then gradually rescinded the layoff notices until the beginning of the school year, got it down to 200 that were laid off, and then when the school year started, began to hire some of them back, because they needed them in the classroom. And then we have, this year, hired somewhere between 400 and 500 temporary teachers besides that. So this idea that we can just lay off teachers as some sort of simple solution. The problem is, Ms. Nakamura has not presented a solution. So I will give one to her, which would be basically, when we came with the shortfall in March, we could have said, we will just lay off 2,000 teachers. We could lay off one out of every four teachers in the district, and this would certainly balance the budget. And again, my response, that is okay, we'll have to break down the walls in the high schools, so that we can have one teacher for two classes, and we'll have to extend recess to half or three-fourths of the day, so we can circulate the kids to the classroom. This affects the kids. We need to have teachers in the classroom. Now, we are going to, and the reality is, too, we are, we have adjusted our, a big portion of our budget, which Ms. Nakamura often refers to, is personnel, and we have adjusted our level of payroll. We will have a few hundred less teachers next year than we have this year. The thing is, we've done it a smarter way, by reducing the higher-paid teachers and having greater savings, but we certainly will have less teachers next year than we have this year. What we are going to do, again, beginning July 1, to deal with the next year, is what we've been doing the last few months. We had some very creative ideas from the staff in terms of increasing revenues. One was this year and next year, which was increasing the, improving and increasing the school lunch program, which brings in more revenue to the district. We also have been working on our attendance. By boosting the attendance in our schools, we can, we will have an additional $3 million of revenue. For the coming years, we need to look at other forms of revenue. There are more forms of reimbursement that we can get through Medi-Cal for our health programs. We need to make sure we're getting our fair share of military impact aid for our schools. We can look for outside funding for some of our environmental and other programs. We're going to continue to look at decreasing the transportation in the district, and we have other means that we can look at. At some point, the people of San Diego can say, we're not going to just wait for Sacramento to give us the minimum amount we need to run our schools, and we'll decide whether we want to fund our schools ourselves. So the reality is, we are dealing with reality, we are making the hard choices, and this is the point that we're at. We have saved our schools for next year, and we will begin on July 1 to work to save the schools for the following year and the year after that. Thank you.
Nakamura, do you want to comment?
Well, yeah, I'm glad we're not making this personal. I think my name was counted, I think I got 12 times. You know, so I'm more than happy to be in the vanguard for this objection over this budget. I think that it, you know, we have done some creative things, but I do want the public to know that those creative things, you know, came from the heart and soul of Dr. Terry Greer many times. He has gone back into this district and shaken it down to its very core, and he started that last spring. I have never worked with anybody, anybody, who has so completely looked at the administration and how things could be done more efficiently, brought people in that actually knew how to get solutions. I have never worked with anyone more committed and more dedicated to actually getting after the education of children in this district. It has been an honor and a privilege to hear his thoughts and his creativity in trying to find answers, but it is also based in reality. It is also frequently, and sadly, an understanding that you need to find equilibrium. And the teachers in this district deserve better than this, because they're going to bear the brunt of it in their classrooms. The teachers have already taken a salary cut, as I have said before. I'm the daughter of two teachers. You know, my father was teaching when I was born, and my mother got her teaching credential later, and she was a single-parent teacher. I know what happens when you cut back on the supplies. You know, it comes out of paychecks, and it comes out of things that you might have done for your family, because you look at the faces of your children in your classroom. My mother never seemed to look too much in my face when she was making these decisions, I have to say. You know, speaking as a daughter of all of these wonderful, dedicated professionals, because they know that the kids need these things in the classroom, particularly the elementary school teachers. So I worry excessively about that. I worry about equilibrium. I worry about finding that balance and valuing people who have spent 20 years or more in the education profession, as teachers, as, who have worked their way up through the ranks and are now vice principals or are principals, and now we're not going to give them the support, and that we somehow value them less for all of their dedication and all of the time that they have spent. There is a budget crisis, there is no question about this. When I have talked with assembly members up in Sacramento, when the look of sorrow on their face, you know, their faces, and the concern that they have, you're absolutely right, there is a budget crisis, and it needs to be dealt with in an equilibrium, trying to find a balance, and that's what we do here. And I don't think that we have found it. I'm not, I actually don't mean to say that people don't care up here about the children in this district, but I think that they are really out of balance, that this board could do a better job in finding, in listening to our staff and the recommendations that they have made, listening to their concerns, listening to the county superintendent of public instructions, listening to, you know, listening to people, many people around us in trying to find better answers. But I also put it on the shoulders that when, you know, we've got salary rollbacks, so we could be doing health benefit, you know, questions that we could be having, I don't know of anyone else that has a $5 copay, and I don't think increasing that is really seriously out of line. I think that we could all take a little bit of a salary rollback and try and find some equilibrium, a little bit here and a little bit there, but we're not doing it a little bit here and a little bit there. We're not asking our labor union to do anything, nothing, and I think that's probably unprecedented in the state of California. I don't know of any other school district that hasn't really honestly asked for help and gotten it, that has taken a steely-eyed look at this budget and realized, if we care about our education, we care about that teacher in the classroom. We've got to find a way to support them, whether that's through counselors, whether it's through vice principals, they need support. It's not enough to just have one person in the classroom. It's a complicated, complicated process, and public education matters. So, you know, it is what it is, and I don't think, when we come in in September, I am very concerned. So parents, I'm sure that we're going to be turning to you and saying, look, we sure need help with foundations, and we need everybody to pitch in and to give more money, you know, and sadly, after we take this budget vote, that's going to be true.
Call for the question, please. You want to speak to the superintendent?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's express him.
I know, but since you hadn't spoken at all.
Well, I just appreciate the kind words of Member Nakamura, but also would like to say that I don't feel like I deserve a lot of credit for coming up with ideas that end up with these type of draconian cuts to our schools, and that I think are going to have a negative impact on our children. I would like to say a special thank you to the principals and the administrators who turned out tonight to express yourself, and please know how much I appreciate what you do. I've been a principal, I've also been a vice principal, and I understand how hard that work is. These are not easy times. These have been tough times. I came here last March the 24th, and every day has been a tough day. Every day I've been here has been a tough day. It's been about budget, it's been about cut, it's been about getting information from Sacramento one day, it's been about getting different information the next day, it's been about being compared to former superintendents that you don't even know. Some of it's been mean-spirited, but a lot of it's been rewarding. And I wouldn't do it any differently, to be honest with you. And while there's differences on this board, I do think these are good people that work hard and that do care about our school district. And as I have said since I have first been here, I work for the board, and I work for the majority of the board. And I can't imagine trying to balance a budget where all five board members would be in total agreement, and for all different reasons. These are hard times ahead of us as a state, and not just as a school district. And I do think that in California, it's going to get worse before it gets better. This is not an issue of a board not being transparent, or a finance department not knowing what it's doing, or principals and teachers not working hard. I believe we have a real big flaw in the way revenue is generated in this state. And until our state elected officials are willing to address that, I think that next year, in spite of this staff's best efforts, and in spite of everyone's most creative solutions, it will be worse, because we won't get any more money. And I hate to be a doomsayer, but I promise you, it has to be fixed by our elected officials at the state level, and I really do believe that. So I want to just say thank you for everyone who's had suggestions on how to help balance this budget, for those that are going to be negatively impacted. this budget, for those that are going to be negatively impacted. I really regret that, and I really worry about our students and about all of our employees. So, that's it. And I know these are hard times, but thank you for the opportunity to speak.
That passes 3-2. Now, we need, the next motion is for us to adopt the, this report?
Yeah, essentially the three things. So, making sure we adopt the 2009-10 budget, then also the solutions.
We have to do 2010 and 11.
Yes. We just did the solutions, and now we do the actual document.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
For which?
You can refer to the resolution, President Jackson.
I think what we're asking the board to do is to approve the, I think it needs to be on record this way. I think we're asking you to approve the '09, '08, '09, '09, '10, '11, '12 budgets and this resolution that we can submit to the county office. Just do it all as one package.
That's correct.
Then we don't lose anything.
If you look at the resolution, it's documented each of those items.
10-11, that's what we just voted on.
We just voted on.
We did 10 and 11, but not 11 and 12.
Yeah, we didn't.
Who did not take care of both yours?
Not according to my information.
They took it down to 19, and then...
I thought it was 17.
So, now we need a motion to adopt the resolution.
That's correct. And if you look at the resolution, President Jackson, you'll see that all those items that Dr. Greer mentioned are listed there in the points.
I see. Okay, can I get a motion to move this resolution, please?
So moved.
So moved, have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any comments? Please vote. That passes 3-2. And anything else we need to, that's it? Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Board members, please come back at 20 minutes till. Thank you.
Yeah, well, solidarity doesn't mean shit. Stephen. Bet you're going to have longer class times after all. That's what I said. They're going to steal from you and give it to somebody else. But that's not Title I, that's just regular dollars. What they call it was a steal of the regular dollars. Instead of Title I, we had a big argument about Title I. Now, they're rubbing it in. Help me split the difference. Help me split the difference. It's for the future, it's not for the day. It'd be quite easy seeing you. I need to talk to more of them, but... I'll talk to the usual suspects, but, you know, the cluster needs to hear from me sometime, and I can't do it out of the guys that, you know, I can't call a cluster meeting and play that game of doing a reorganization tutor trick, but I'll talk to anybody now, and I've got enough on, you know, presentations ready for people already. Get some key people, yeah. Well, I can get Lawrence Tessa in if I have to. I don't go out in the open doing stuff like you're behind the scenes with this guy. Oh, how powerful I am with this group. I have a, I have a good friend here I can work with. He's something about, there he is, he's something about... You know, that John knows it. Tell him I know about it. See him, I'm not, I don't see him.
Did board members return to the dais, please?
Okay, good. Well, I'm glad they're still moving ahead.
Always good to know somebody.
Well, that's great. Thanks.
Dr. Evans? Thank you. I want to speak to Mr. Barrera. Oh, I see him. Mr. Barrera?
Barter on the court. I lost my agenda. Want to say something, Bill?
Yes. Thank you very much for your patience. Board members, I'm going to skip and take F10 because we have some students waiting, and that way they can be about their business. F10, Mr. Barrera, please?
Yeah, just very quickly, I just want to recognize James Macias and the internship program that he's created. So, in the middle of, you know, helping solve our budget crisis and, you know, never getting to sleep and working on the weekends, James is creating a program for our students, which is, you know, for students who are interested in, you know, finance as a potential career track, it's creating opportunities for our students to work closely, you know, with James and the department against practical experience. So, James, please go ahead and...
Great, thanks. Thanks a lot. We were encouraged by Vice President Barrera to implement and institute a finance internship program here, and it's actually funded by an outsourced, outside source, so we're not using district dollars to do this. We looked in several areas, accounting, finance, payroll, and also procurement. So, I have one student here that I'd like to introduce himself, and he can talk about the process a little bit, and he can describe to you the job that we offered him for the period of time for the summer. Come on in.
Hello, thank you, board members. My name is Anthony Martinez, and I am currently an intern for Mr. Macias as an accountant, and the process is actually pretty fun. We had to, we had an interview. I actually interviewed with Mr. Macias himself and a couple of his colleagues. It was five in total in the room. I think this is actually a great opportunity for many of the, for many of us, especially as an intern, because now we can use not only as a reference for other resumes, our teachers and our principals, but I can also use Mr. Macias as a CFO as a reference for any future resumes that I do. So, I think it's a great opportunity to be an intern for him. Yeah, so, thank you, thank you.
If you have any budget recommendations for us, we welcome.
Yeah, we welcome. Yes, young minds.
And if you just give me one more minute, I'd like to introduce Joe Austin, so he can talk about the program.
Thank you.
Just real quick, in the last couple of hours, having completely squelched Anthony's desire to go into finance, I don't know what will, but I wanted to thank Mr. Barrera in particular and James Macias for making a priority to place students in internships. Anthony Martinez is a junior, leaving his junior year, going into his senior year in the Academy of Finance, a small learning community, a career-themed academy, and my small school, School of Business at San Diego High. And this year, we're putting all 30 juniors in that small learning community to pay to internships. It's a powerful program, and I thank you for supporting it.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Items, information on item, we'll go to item FO4. Dr. Evans?
Okay, on item FO4, which says, "Plan for comprehensive study of demographics, location of neighborhood schools, and transportation." And this is the first reading, so this is not for action. I have learned we need to deliberate carefully when we're making decisions. So, the recommendation I'm making is based on the idea that we have been, had to make, and as you see, we're talking about the budget, make a lot of decisions in a very short period of time, and sometimes we don't have a long timeframe of reference. And so, the whole purpose of this is for us to decide, we've had some board workshop meetings discussing where we want to go between now and our first graders graduate in the year 2020, what we're going to do over the next 10 or 11 years to improve our schools. And many of the things that come up, for example, school closures was a big issue, and we have to look both at the past and the future to see what happens with school closures. The same thing with bus transportation. A lot of people think that we transport too many kids in this district. We can't just say tomorrow we're not going to do that because we don't have the right school capacity and the right locations. One of the priorities of the board, at least in part, is that we reinforce the neighborhood schools, and yet, the problem is, we have capacity in certain neighborhoods that don't have very many kids, and less capacity in other schools, areas that have more kids. So, the purpose of this is for, so we're not stuck with these rapid decisions about, do we close the school, what do we do about transportation, what's going on in terms of birth rates and planning and development, so we have a very clear picture over the next several years of what we're doing with our schools. So, I just want to just go over this briefly. The problem I'm listing here is the decisions about the location of schools, the school capacity. Another issue, I mentioned, the type of schools. Superintendent Greer has talked a lot about certain types of small high schools that we would like to have, and too often, these decisions are made due to immediate need and short-term financial considerations, and without the long-term data. So, we need to have sufficient school capacity in the areas where children live, and we have excess capacity in other areas, and of course, as I said before, about the transportation. One of the problems we have in our district is that many neighborhood schools are perceived by the public as inadequate, which results in lower enrollment at school, which results in further deterioration of the quality of that school. And while parents and students should have some choices to meet the unique educational needs of their own students, parents should not have to go outside of their neighborhood solely based on the fact that they do not have a good and decent school in their own neighborhood. So, what I am suggesting in terms of solution is that strong neighborhood schools will result in better connections with students, parents, and community, that the school capacity needs to be developed where students live. At the same time, we need to continue to promote diversity throughout the entire San Diego community, and we also need to offer varied educational opportunities and choices for our students. There are many fine programs in the district that do offer choice, special curriculum emphasis, and promote diversity, but these programs need to be fine-tuned to meet our changing needs from now in 2009 up to 2020. So, as a district, we need to develop some criteria for the long-term development of our schools that will affect our short-term decisions. I'm just giving you some examples, some questions that we need to ask. These are not, by any means, I'm not suggesting these are all the questions that need to be answered, but what is the proper size range for our schools? We need to talk about this. What is a reasonable amount of transportation for a portion of students in the district which should be transported? What type of high schools do we want to have successful high school graduation rates, and where should those schools be located? How do magnet schools supplement what we offer in our neighborhood schools and at the same time promote diversity and special programs? And if we support the idea of neighborhood schools, how far do we feel like a child should have to travel to reach a neighborhood school? Sometimes we're looking at the number of students in the school without looking at the distance there is from one school to another. Another big one, which we're going to discuss a little bit later tonight, how do we lessen the capacity of bus schedules on individual school schedules? of bus schedules on individual school schedules? So, how do we put together our desire for neighborhood schools and still maintain diversity within the district? How do we support communities developing their schools and their communities so there's a smooth flow from elementary to middle to high school? And also, the whole issue of technology is, as we're developing our schools and the locations, how is technology going to fit into that? Just a simple example of when there's a course that's only a few students in the school may want to take, there are teleconferencing possibilities at various locations. But the ultimate question is, how do we want our schools to look between now and over the next 10 years? We need to make these decisions so we're not just operating blindly when we're making our day-to-day decisions. And so, the determination above criteria needs to be made by the Board of Education with input from the staff and from the community. And so, what I'm proposing is we take the following steps. And as said today, this is just a first reading. People can look at it and decide whether this makes sense or not. First, first have a board workshop to develop these criteria, answer the questions that I listed above in the next three months. And then, for the board to seek input from the staff and their experience in terms of what they think would be reasonable to do. And once we've done that, the third step would be present to the public, not listing this school's going to stay in operation and this school's not going to stay in operation, but what are the criteria for how we're going to develop our schools? And then, at that point, once we've discussed it among the board, the staff, present it to the public, the next step would be to have the staff really perform a thorough demographic study of where the children live, where they attend school, why they are or are not going to certain places, what the development trends are. But I'm putting this as the fourth step because we don't want to just go by the demographic information, locate the schools. We have to have the criteria in the first three steps. And then finally, once we've done all that and that study, then we can develop a 10-year plan. And then, going on, I won't go into details about this, but if there are changes in schools or school closures, we need to do this with adequate time. We have an 18-month plan, for example, if a school's going to be closed. We need to have that implemented so that when we can look ahead, we'll actually know, this community has six schools, we can only support five schools. Let's take a couple of years to figure it out and get it done the right way. So, I've tried to lay out some specific direction for us to develop a long-term plan to, over the next several months, and then to review it each year so that we can keep on track. And again, this is to answer the general questions that we come up with very specifically in the short run. So, I just wanted to present this for consideration at the next board meeting.
Any board member comment?
Sure. I think it's a good idea.
Mr. DeBeck?
That's a great idea.
We have one public speaker, Ethel Larkin.
Ethel Larkin is President, OSS 724. My information is on file. We're just asking that when this plan gets started, or when you implement this, that OSS be brought to the table and be placeholders, because we do represent Transportation Department. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I would just like to amend what I said when I talked about, well, I was talking about staff, and then certainly staff concluded all of our employees being taken into consideration.
Absolutely. Item FO5 is an action item. Dr. Evans?
Okay. This is an action item. Let me get it up here. Okay. This, we have a board resolution here that I am proposing, which is basically for, which we've been talking about tonight, is that once we've approved the budget, to have good monthly reports from finance and operations about how we're doing in terms of following along on our budget each month, so we can really achieve the savings that we've outlined. So, the resolution reads as follows, whereas this is a year of transition for improved budget accountability and the organizational culture of the San Diego Unified School District, and whereas the achievement of the savings in the budget already approved by the board is going to depend on the vigilance of staff and the board throughout the coming year, and whereas we're also likely to face further cuts in the course of the year, and we're going to continue to have to make budget adjustments, and whereas we need current and accurate information to make such adjustments in real time, be it resolved, the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer will come up with a plan to inform the Board of Education and the public in clear lay terms about the current financial state of the district each month, and be it further resolved that the plan would indicate the date when board members would receive the report, and a month following the reported month, the report would be available for public review, and would be addressed at board meetings as needed. And further resolved that the outline of this information provided in the report will be presented to the staff board no later than the July 28 meeting. And I've already, actually, before even bringing this up specifically with Mr. Macias, he had mentioned the possibility of the July 14 meeting. Examples of what we could like in such reports would include anticipated district revenues to date, as well as actual revenues, actual monthly expenditures in relation to budget amounts for all schools, for all departments, possible comparisons with the same time previous year, special problems encountered, exceptions made, and identification of potential additional savings. So, that is what I am proposing.
Okay. Is it your motion?
Second.
Okay. Seconded it. Any more board discussion?
Yes, Mr. DeBeck?
I still don't, I think. I don't think I've changed it, but anyway, whatever. This is considerable amount of work. And if we're busy cutting staff, I don't, you know, I agree that there's a lot of good ideas here, but I'd like to know something about, when we get this report in July, how many hours it took for them to prepare it and how much benefit we get out of it. Because, you know, it looks good, you know, but then if they can't keep up with it, you know, or if it's a major cost to the school district, I think it looks to me like more than a full-time job just for one person to do it.
Can you agree?
Unless the system's got it already built in.
I personally think this is critical information for the board to have, and that we quite frankly should have been providing this all along. I'm not sure about a monthly basis. It may have been a quarterly basis would be more reasonable, because I think Mr. DeBeck is right. As a matter of fact, I know he's right, that this will be a full-time job for one to two people, that as soon as they get one of these reports done to view, they'll have to turn right back around and start on the second one. And the problem with this is, you want a report done, you want the information, for example, you might want it today. Well, you want the report today, it'll take the staff two weeks to get it to you. So, you're going to have a two-week, three-week lag time unless we work with FICMAT, and unless we are willing to invest in the software programs that we need, we cannot continue to run a 1.1 general operating budget on Excel spreadsheets. And that's what's happening right now. And our principals and everyone else knows it. And we can't operate that way. And so, we need to work with a group like FICMAT that understands finance, and they will be willing to work with us. And I think this is something that's doable. My question is, and my question will be to the FICMAT group, is how quickly will we be able to do it? And that'll be included in the plan that we present to you, if that's acceptable.
Yeah. Just to respond to the superintendent, that was my intention, that in July, the staff could come up with a plan about what is reasonable within the work time that they have allotted, the resources that they have, what kinds of things you would be able to cover, what kind of things wouldn't be able to be covered, what's the best possible report they could come up with. We could kind of give back our kind of input on when we'd like more of this information and less of this information. It's just, the whole idea is, we have not stopped on looking at ways to save money, and in the course of the year, looking at it once a month, I think will be very helpful.
Mr. DeBeck?
Yeah. Well, I have to go by my experience on how long it takes to close a set of books. You know, I have seen times when I was sitting here in September, and we hadn't closed down the year before, okay? Now, if you're asking for monthly reports, are you saying that they got to run their balances every month? And if that's the case, there's got to be a whole lot of changes in what they do. I mean, I don't even know a software that does it that fast.
Well, that maybe, to answer that, that may be part of the plan.
But the resolution says the current financial state of the district each month. And I think maybe you ought to have in there something about when they can do it rather than every month, because the resolution says, do it every month.
Okay. Well, I guess what I would say, would amend that to being that that's what we want to get to, is on a monthly basis, and if there's, you know, there may be some steps to get there in terms of the software and so on.
How to get to a monthly report would be a different thing than this resolution calls for. You know, this thing calls for a monthly report. That's it. It doesn't say maybe, it says monthly report, okay? Now then, if you want them to give you advice about how they could get, how soon they could get to a monthly report, or what the progress would be in that, maybe it would be that we'd have to adopt $4 million worth of software. Is that what you want? In order to accomplish this each month report, it might be a major expense in software.
Could we get Mr. Macias to...
I think we can just, well, that's what I, this is what I think we should have them come back with, is a proposal how to answer it rather than a mandate of monthly reports. You know, I think we ought to give them the right to respond to this idea. Since this is a first reading, I think you got the right to modify it. But if this is only an attempt...
Now, this is not a first reading.
Well, no, it's an action item, so that's my point.
Only point I was trying to make, and James can speak, is I'm trying to be reasonable. I have seen how hard his staff has worked. I've seen the nights, the weekends, to try to get us from where we were to where we are. I think this goes back also to the kind of software we're using in our schools to reconcile their balances. And I don't sit here and tell you that we don't need to spend three or four million dollars out of a different source, out of capital funds. We've got to do something different with the software we're using to run the financial operations of this district. And so, it may be a large investment. It may not be four millions. Who knows?
Yeah.
But it may be a large investment, but we cannot, I don't think it's possible to do what you're asking James to do with his current staff and with our current software managing system. I just don't know. He can disagree, and he knows he can disagree with me, and that's good to go.
No, sir. I'm not disagreeing with you. Thank you. What we do have, though, if you look at I dot 004, we've been working with FICMAT. Anthony Bridges, I think, is here tonight. He could speak to this if you want him to, Dr. Greer. So, it's twofold. We're trying to bring quickly online two different components of software. One is a budget development software that'll help us move away from the Excel spreadsheets into a web-based tool that will be very transparent, that we can put information together a lot more quickly. The other is a financial reporting software, and that will give us access to some of the high-level information that a lot of the board members and Dr. Greer would like to see, budget versus actuals, how much we spent by certain departments, where we have identified areas for risk, that kind of a thing. So, from a short-term perspective, that's what we're doing, is we're bringing online, if you approve it, we'll bring those two pieces of software on to us. And then, on top of that, you've already approved essentially the stuff for PeopleSoft with Daryl, to really bring the entire systems together that'll coordinate everything from a disparate standpoint into a very centralized source. And Dr. Greer, if you'd like Anthony to, if he's still here.
I'd like for you to at least introduce Anthony and let him, let the board see who he is and if he's still here.
Yeah, you know, I just, I just talked, oh, did he? Oh, I'm sorry. He just left here. I just talked to him outside. He's not here anymore. I apologize. But what we did is, we actually sat down with Debbie Deal and also Anthony from FICMAT, and we walked through the issues that we were having from a financial reporting standpoint. And based on our analysis and their analysis, they said two key areas that you probably want to do right away, which essentially is the budget development software and also the financial reporting software. And that's why that's on there, so we can get prepped to help provide financial reports on a very consistent basis.
I guess one of the questions that we're looking here is the current financial state of the district where it says each month. If we change that to quarterly or bimonthly, would...
I think in order for us to be successful initially, it would be a good idea to do it quarterly, but the goal, at the end goal, would be at some point in time, it's a monthly basis.
So, if Dr. Evans is willing to...
Well, I would certainly amend it, that the goal is to eventually get to a monthly basis. And that's what I would expect to come up when you report back to us in July about the specifics of that in terms of the first quarter, and then what sort of timeframe we might be able to move towards that.
So, what I did here on your first large paragraph, I said the public is clear, lay terms about the current financial state of the district, quarterly with a goal to be monthly. Is that sufficient for you?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay with you? Second, any other discussion?
Yeah, I had to ask to speak quite some time ago.
I'm sorry. You didn't reach both of you. Yes.
Well, I didn't vote for that budget, so I just thought I was being ignored.
Oh, no, you didn't reach. I'm sorry.
I'm teasing, yeah. The, yeah, I want to reiterate this business about getting the information down to the department level and to the school level. What our principals and our department heads have to deal with, as I've said, actually, for, it's been two years now, is I don't know how anybody makes decisions or how anybody keeps track of the money that is under their responsibility. I think this is a good step forward, but I think it is going to require an investment, but it's definitely a direction that we need to go. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for it monthly, but I concur in looking at, you know, the budget that we've been working with. It's going to take a little bit of time to put this on, so I think it's appropriate to change it to quarterly with a goal for monthly. But the staff and the superintendent are going to need our support as this goes forward. But I really do not want to lose sight of the budget at that level. If people knew what a budget looked like in our departments and what they have to work with, it's unbelievable how bad it is. It's just unbelievable, especially anybody that's worked in, I don't know, used Quicken for doing your own home, you know, economics and your own, trying to figure this out. It's just unbelievable what we ask our staff to work with, and they do a great job in that level. But, you know, I think it's, this is long overdue, and it's something that we tried to take a step in that direction.
Mr. Barrera, please?
No, I'm good.
Oh, you're good? Okay. And please vote then. Okay, that passes 5-0 with a modification of quarterly with monthly. Okay. Thank you. We'll now take up item FO6. FO6 is the renewal of Holly Drive Charter Petition. Mr. Brazee?
Yes, President Jackson. This is being brought back to the board for modification of a prior action based on erroneous information that I provided. A modification was made to staff recommendation regarding the length of the renewal. So, it has been brought back to correct that. There are two corrections or modifications to the action. One is to change the renewal from one year to five years, and the other is to change the action to clarify that the conditions, the nine conditions, there were actually eight in the staff recommendation, and one was added, that those conditions continue through the life of the renewal.
So, do I have a motion for this item?
Yeah, I want to, yeah, I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
I want to speak to it.
Then I want to come in on the...
Okay. Mr. DeBeck?
Item number nine, the passing of the September 1, 2009, would make this all moot. That if they don't have the conditional use permit by September 1, 2009, then the charter is not granted. We mutually agree that that's the case.
That's correct.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Camaro?
Yeah, I just, with all due respect to the folks that have come out to support this, I didn't support it initially, and I'm not going to support this now. I think that it's not in the best interests of either the charter school, and I'm a strong supporter of charter schools, but I don't think it's in the best interests of the students who are attending here, nor is it in the best interest of the charter school. And with all apologies to those of you that came out, I just want to be honest.
Alicia Smith. Dr. Evans, you want to speak first?
This is along the lines of what Mr. DeBeck was saying about number nine, but I guess what we have here is that at any point, the charter could be revoked. Number two says the school will receive a statewide ranking above the minimum rank of four the next three consecutive years, which means that if in the first year they didn't reach that rank, it's revoked. And so, everything else along there, okay, at any point, okay?
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, President Jackson, members of the board, Superintendent Greer. My name's Alicia Smith. I'm the principal at Holly Drive Leadership Academy. I'm just here tonight to thank you for renewing our charter, approving our charter petition for the '09-10 year. We just wanted to let you know that, and assure you that you will have your CUP on September 1 of 1999, as well as all conditions met by June 30. Thank you.
'09. Hello, Bishop. Good to see you here. Thank you. And if there's no more board comments, let's vote. Okay. That passes 4-1. Okay, the next item up is item FO7. Okay, the next item up is item F oh seven, which is the district initial proposal to bargain success agreement for the '09, '10, and beyond OSS.
Will approve.
Okay, got a motion? Got a, got a second? Second? Dr. Greer? Any comments?
No comments.
No comments? Okay, please vote. That passes five zero. The next one is F oh eight, an agreement with the city of San Diego.
Approval.
Okay, got a motion? Got a second? Okay, this is, Dr. Greer?
Thank you. This is the letter of intent agreement with the city of San Diego for the placement of a charter school in the new central library to support downtown educational requirements. The report is pretty much explains it, the concept and the cost. The board has been aware of this proposal for a number of months. I think the original concept began with a, a vision of Board Member Jackson's to have a school in the new library downtown, and we took a look at having a regular district school there. Several things occurred. Number one, we could not put an elementary school in the building because of the atrium in, on the first and second floor. I'm talking about a traditional district school. In addition to that, our staff looked at the fact that we have capacity at Washington Elementary and Sherman Elementary to handle elementary student growth in the downtown area our staff sees for the, for the next five to 10 years. What we do have in that part of town, however, is San Diego High School, which has an attendance zone of about 5,000 students and only has capacity for about 3,000 students. So there isn't a need, our staff feels there is a need in that area to accommodate more high school students. And we looked again at the possibility of purchasing that property from, from the district's perspective. We've looked at a lot of different angles. Scott Himmelstein and Bill Koba from our staff, along with folks from PPO, I think, have done a nice job in trying to look at every possible solution to forming this partnership. And at the end of the day, for us to, to actually house a district school there would have required major renovation and design changes to meet the intent of the Field Act because of, of public schools. However, a charter school is not subjected to those same legal requirements. And so one of the proposals, the proposal in front of you tonight is that the district enter into a 40-year lease with the central library to start this school, a $20 million lease over those 40 years, and we would acquire the use of two floors of the central library for a secondary charter school. And again, you've heard the explanation of why secondary versus elementary. That's pretty much, pretty much of it. The question about who would design the school, what kind of school would it be, is my understanding that the friends of the library have decided that they would apply for the initial charter and a charter grant planning funding, and that they would, the, the board that you would appoint as a, as a board, along with the mayor's appointment, et cetera, would then start the process of, of employing a principal, excuse me, and doing the planning. He would have a two- to three-year plan period before the school was constructed, and therefore I believe the school would be able to open on time with a good recruitment plan, et cetera. So with that, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. Quite frankly, several of you around the table have been as, as involved as much or more than I have in the process, so kind of surprised when you called on me.
But your name was on the sheet. Following, following your orders here. Mr. DeBecque, please.
Sure. Well, there's, first of all, Prop S said that we were going to do this, we had this money set aside based on the needs for downtown. It was indeterminate at the time, but there were, a lot of people were concerned about the potential growth of East Village. And I believe the intent was, at the time we put this in, was to approve the possibility of whatever educational needs would occur in downtown, but particularly East Village, because our bond issue runs out for a number of years, and we wouldn't have any other opportunity to do anything about East Village should it grow. Okay, that's, that's one thing. The other thing is that it's only hearsay that we need the downtown school for secondary students. There isn't any established charter, there isn't any established enrollment, there's only the, maybe it might happen. So I have trouble with the whole idea that we are going to take 20 million bucks, that by the way, is not there, it's yet to be picked up because we have to sell, we have to sell the bonds, we have sold some bonds, but not necessarily this 20 million. And so we're going to take away from all those early projects in Project S, we're going to trump those and say, no, those aren't as important as getting in on the ground floor, no, no, on the seventh or eighth floor of the library. So that's the point. Now, then the other issue is, it's only hypothetical that there would be a charter school. So what happens when we go ahead and we make this agreement, and then for some reason the charter school is either not, ever comes forward or not, but we still own two floors? Well, so I've got language that I'd like to at least propose. I mean, I'm, I'm not thrilled about this whole idea, but the very least is, it says here in the, in the attachment A, which is a non-binding letter of intent, says the use. It says use operation of a public charter school, and I put a comma after that, and I say follow that, or other appropriate district purposes. So that means that if we then agree to it, and for some reason we have failure of the charter to materialize, then we have the opportunity to use the space we own for some legitimate purpose. Then, there's another place in it which says, and I'm not comfortable about this language either, but I'm not a lawyer, so I'll let them fix the language, but it says subleasing. Tenant may sublease in a space with landlord's approval of its subtenants and its use. Subleasing will not extend to any extension options, that means the extension of the agreement. Landlord will share in 50% of any subleasing profit. That means that should we have to sublease it, that the city would get half of our subleasing profit, but we've already done all the material improving of the floor, we've taken care of our cost of it, so then why should we have a share of something we financed? It makes no sense to me that we have that, so I think we need to have that line taken out. I don't think we're going to share our sublease. And fact is that it may be, well, be that any charter that wants it will have a grab at it, and that may be somebody that will lease from us, and the new agreements for leases have yet to be negotiated. So does that mean that if we lease it for less, that the city is willing to share that loss? I don't think so. So then it sounds like this thing was written by the city and not by us, and it was all in their benefit and not in ours. I honestly believe that what was, what was done was, it came through loud and clear. The library plan was failing. There was a need to grab for a life preserver, and all of a sudden the district had thrown into their, in wishy-washy language, I have to agree, next time I will never approve this kind of language, I'll tell you that. But the idea was, we're thinking about East Village at the time that was put in there. But the truth was that we put it in wishy-washy language so we could use it for any educational needs, you know? I mean, I know who wrote it and how they wrote it. But the point is that the people that were drowning were looking for this life preserver, and they grabbed it quickly because there's $20 million. It's not really there yet. It doesn't mean that it's, that in the first 20 years we're going to spend it, but, but so be it. They, they wanted it right now, and if we don't rush and do it, you know, we're going to consider the bad people who didn't want a school at the library? Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not there. I just, I just am not in agreement with the, with the idea, but if we are at least going to agree on the idea, which I suspect will happen three-two, I don't think that the terms that are written in here are appropriate. I think I'd like to see the agreement changed.
The modification that you're asking for is that under use, we add the language, the appropriate use. Mr. Koba is getting this down for us.
Well, they heard me. Other appropriate district purposes means that if, because it was originally going to be offices, why not? We could have our offices down there. I could think of a few places people I'd like to send there. But, okay. But anyway, then, well, then we go to the next agreement, which is the lease agreement.
Then number 11, deleting the last line, Mr. Koba, so you can respond back to how that might, you know, if that's, the motion maker is okay with that, and the second there is okay with that?
No, I'm not.
Okay. All right. Did you want to speak next, or do you want to go to public comments? Any other speakers want to speak right now?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Is it?
She was looking my way, so I get the advantage. Yeah, I think I've been on record as being enthusiastic about this. I think the intent is for a school, and I sincerely, from my heart, really believe in the educational opportunity. The vision that this provides for our students' future is, to me, really very moving. To be part of this, a true partnership with the city in building what I hope will be one of the most important edifices in this city, is, I think, probably one of the most important things that I've done as a member of the Board of Education, and if it helps the downtown library be built, that I think is, it's a privilege to be up here and vote for that. We are a great city. We're one of the most educated cities in the country when you look at our number of high school graduates, our number of college graduates, our number of graduate degree holders in this city. We are very competitive and at the top of the list for other cities across the country. We should have a downtown library that reflects that love of learning, that love of education, that quest and thirst for knowledge, and we are long overdue for this. And that our students will be housed in something that, that is a, really a monument to that is, for me, I think, very, as I said, I think it's very moving and important, and I'm not interested in having offices based in that for some administrator down there. This has to be about the kids, and it has to be, I, my belief and my support for this is not for a select group of children and students who will be housed in this building, but rather that this will reach out and touch and impact and influence students throughout this district, that students from every corner of this district will feel comfortable walking into this library. They know that their peers are there, and that the collection that is housed within that library touches their lives, is important to them, understands where their future is headed, and I think this gives us a very unique opportunity to do that. So it's, it's my honor and my privilege to have moved this, and I thank Mr. Barrera for, for his second, and Ms. Jackson for her continuing support of this.
Yeah, I just wanted, before we hear the speakers, I wonder if Stuart, if you could come up. I know that there were some recommendations made from the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, and I'd like to understand those. He's going to, oh, yeah, somebody from the ICOC is going to read the letter. Okay.
It's one of the first speakers.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you want to, you want to wait till we call? Because I'm going to have you read in just a few minutes as part of the public testimony.
Do you want me to wait?
Yes, just a second, please. Are there any other comments?
No, I mean, I, I'll talk more at the end.
I will too. Mr. Dr. Dr. Evans?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I mean, I certainly like the idea of the city and school district doing things in joint use. I mean, ideally, what I would like to see is in our neighborhoods, when we've, we've have a crisis of the, the city libraries, and we have crises in our schools, that we could find some joint uses in terms of library facilities in the neighborhoods. We have schools barricaded up at night, libraries that can't stay open. I think there's some ways that we could combine that. I think, you know, even in the city, it's a little bit hard when you hear about a big, beautiful edifice, which I think would be wonderful, at the same time that the, the neighborhood libraries are not really doing very well. I think that's, that's a problem. I think it's also a problem, at the same time that we're talking, have been in conversations about closing small schools, and a lot of them have been very close to the act, saying we're going to open up one. And I'm not saying that this is necessarily a bad idea. I think, but the problem I have is with the timing, that we have to, under the gun, respond very quickly to the timing the city is, wants to do so that they can get this deal to go through. And in that process, we haven't really figured out, you know, the financial viability of, the financial educational viability of, of running a small school. So that, that's, that's my problem in terms of just not being able to carefully plan this out. I also have some problems in terms of using the construction money for a charter, and a charter that has not been formed. I see, I, I think charter schools are great things, and I think they kind of come out of a grassroots democratic process in terms of people want a certain type of education for their children, they band together, they form an organization, and then they figure out how to put it together and get a facility. And this is a little bit of an unusual situation for, you know, creating a, a building and creating the school facility and then handing it over to a charter at that point. So that's, that's why I can't really support it at this point, and I'm not really sure that the city's going to be able to follow through with what they're saying, anyway.
I'll make brief comments here, and then I'll, then I'll call on the public testimony. It is very important that we're always looking at our future. One of the reasons, and certainly Superintendent mentioned that this was something that started a while back, as we developed our downtown area, the capacity was not there. One of the things that tends to happen is that when people are planning things, the school district is not at the table. And then all of a sudden, we need to build a school, and we have to indemnify or buy property. And, and I have a belief that we don't wait till the need is actually there, that we work with the city in a way that says, where is our city going? How are we part of it? And then we plan accordingly. We know that, that the land downtown, and certainly the current economics may have shifted that, that a little bit, but, but in the planning of having almost 90,000 residents living downtown by the year 2015 meant that we unfortunately would have more students down there. The catchment area right now for San Diego High School is about 5,000 students already. So we know that there's capacity there for, for the high school. Certainly, my, my, my thought at the time was an elementary school because we did have young families moving down there. But I, I think the whole point of this is that, and this, this deficit is causing us to do more and more of this, and as public agencies collaborating with each other, and they're not going to always be necessarily in the outlying areas, but looking to say, you know, and having people at the Unified School District part of that initial planning so that we're not coming behind. And I know a couple of years ago, we didn't build a school in a community because we didn't identify people's homes. And it's not right to say we're not going to do something because it's not a time to do it now, but then wait until we have to go down and close people's businesses or indemnify things. So I, I believe this is a good thing. We're going to have public comment now. We have a couple of speakers. For Gil Johnson, I think Stu is going to read the ICOC letter. Then we have Sharon Peterson, followed by Judy Eby, followed by Laura Andrews, followed by Christine Villa, followed by Judith Harris, and Dabba Baron. Okay? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Stu Markham. I'm the executive director of the 2008 Capital Improvement Bond Program. I've been asked by Gil Johnson, who's the present pro tem of the Proposition S Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, to speak on his behalf tonight and read a letter that was drafted by the ICOC for your review. I do not represent the ICOC. I'm here at his request. Mr. Johnson regrets that he can't be here, he had to be called away on important personal business. Dear members of the Board of Education, the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee held a special meeting 22 June 2009 in order to review the draft non-binding letter of intent agreement dated 22 June 2009 between the city of San Diego as landlord and the San Diego Unified School District as tenant, and the proposed new main library. This LOI was made to express willingness of the parties to negotiate a lease agreement where SDUSD would lease two floors, approximately 7,000, 70,000 square feet, for a lease term of 40 years for a charter high school. City has requested that the base rent due under the lease for the entire term is prepaid prior to the lease commencement date. Commonary expenses will be paid monthly during the lease term by the San Diego Unified School District. Also to make a finding that the use of Prop S funds was authorized under the November 4th 4, 2008 County San Diego Register of Voters sample ballot and voter information pamphlet Proposition S measure. The findings: Matching of Funds. The ICOC was not able to determine if the SDUSD's interpretation of what constitutes matching funds were the intent. The finding: Construct Classrooms and Schools. This use is consistent. Finding: Schools in the downtown area. This use is consistent. Finding: To meet educational needs of SDUSD. This use is consistent with the Prop S ballot measure language. Recommendations and Comments: Use of the Funds. The ICOC Committee made no finding that the use of Proposition S funds are allowed or not allowed under authorized projects described in the November 4, 2008 Proposition S measure. The ICOC advises SDUSD to ensure that any prepayment of rent or other financial consideration prior to the certificate of completion library and the lease commencement date not be released to the city without recourse in the event of a default by the city. Sincerely, Gil Johnson.
Do you get, just where it said the findings, matching of funds, ICOC is not able to determine what constitutes matching funds were the intent? I don't really understand that statement.
There's four provisions in the ballot measure dated 4 November 2008 that pertain to the use of Prop S money for downtown classrooms and educational facility. And one of the clauses in that said to use matching funds. And the ICOC was not able to determine whether our interpretation of the use of matching funds was consistent with the language.
So it is to use matching funds or not? Or I don't understand.
The ICOC had not come to closure on that. They had not determined whether the intent of the matching funds was consistent with what the district plans were.
So, ma'am? So the question would be, if floor seven and eight of the library, if our investment in those floors was matched anywhere by the city, and probably the argument would be, they'd say, well, it's matched by the rest of the building. But that's not a real match, is it?
Well, I can't speak for the ICOC's judgment. You know, the interpretation was that we would use $20 million of Prop S money and matching funds to complete the build-out, which is another $10 million, 7.5 million for construction, tenant improvements, and 2.5 from CCDC funds. That would be the match that we were considering.
Okay. But we're not through when we do the 20 million. We then got 10 on the improvements, right?
The tenant improvements would come out of the additional 10. $20 million would be allocated for prepaid rent. $10 million would be the total value of the FFNE and tenant improvements. And that $10 million would come out of other funds.
That's after the building's constructed, right?
Pardon me, sir?
The tenant improvements are done after the building's constructed.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And so the lease wouldn't start until the building was completed?
Well, currently, the proposal in the non-binding letter of agreement is that we would pay that over the course of the construction. And that could be as much as 26 to 30 months.
But that's not what ICOC said. They said wait until the building's completed.
That's their advisement. They would say that.
I understand.
Right, right. That would be their advisement.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Is Sharon Peterson here?
Sharon Peterson, 4954 Elsa Road, San Diego. I oppose spending taxpayer money, my money, and specifically Prop S money for a facility for a charter school. I heard what Dr. Greer said earlier about the advantages of being able to have a charter school in this kind of facility versus a district one. But district schools right now need every penny and more of Prop S. I agree with the concept of pooling resources, and I completely support an approach of schools as village centers, something that could be considered under any work done under item 4.F. In addition, this sort of thing, a village center with schools, might even enable the district to help students get better social services without spending district educational money to do those social services. However, now is not the time. District funds and Prop S dollars and my tax dollars are not the money that should be used for this facility. Do not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Judy Eby, is that correct? Laura Andrews, are you here?
Hello, I'm Judy Eby. I'm a lifelong teacher. My first teaching job in San Diego was with Head Start in 1965 or '6. I am also speaking to you tonight, I'm bringing some voices from the past. I support this measure with very high enthusiasm because I'm speaking for John Dewey. Think of all of the wonderful theories of education that we've had about experiencing education. And think of the opportunities that students will have as they come into the library and their school at the same time. The research opportunities will go both ways. Will go students enacting projects that will benefit the village or the city and projects that members of the community like myself can get involved in and benefit the students. It's just a win-win proposition. Another voice I'd like to bring to you from the past is Benjamin Bloom. He was my professor. I was his last graduate student in the 1980s. And since then, I've written many books on education, many of them are still being used today in teacher education programs. And I would just like to offer my support in terms of a third of my estate to this project and my support in terms of being an active participant in the planning of the school and a very enthusiastic supporter. Thank you.
You. Laura Andrews. Laura Andrews.
Good evening. My name is Laura Andrews. I reside at 324 28th Street, San Diego, also known as Logan Heights. Just to introduce who I am, I am a parent of three young men who have attended school in San Diego High. But mostly, I wanted to share with you that in Logan Heights, where my children have attended school, there are limitations of the schools that they get to go when it comes to junior high and high school. As a former PTA president, as a parent, and also just a very involved community activist, I think I speak for a lot of parents when I say, we are excited, we're looking forward to the development of this school. Also, I'd like to let you know what a great resource, you know, this school would be to our students and also our parents. I'm sure I don't have to mention or reiterate how the success also plays on the parents' involvement. And if parents are not, don't have access to their child's school because of the location, then of course it contributes to their success. Also, you know, the programs that the, the tools and the resource that the school would bring, I mean, the access, well, the professionals of librarians, the unlimited amount of books that they'll have access to, the quality of a school, of a new school, the technology, it just looks like an excellent school, excellent concept. And we're really proud to really champion something like this in our community. There is a need. You know, San Diego High School cannot meet the need of our current, you know, ratio of students. And so I just want to say is that the education resources and tools that would be available to our kids is just unlimited. There is a need. We need it. And I just want to take a moment to, you know, show our appreciation for Sheila Jackson and your leadership and your efforts, not only here, but Sheila, I've seen you out in the community with other things that affect our children and our education. And I also hope that the Board will allow this opportunity for our students, our children, to attend a school of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Villa, Judith Harris, and Deborah Barrow.
Hi, my name's Christine Via. I have two children in San Diego Public Schools. I want to thank the Board for considering to build a charter school downtown. I grew up in Golden Hills, and my only option for a high school was San Diego High. So my parents chose to bus me to Madison High School. It would have been nice to attend a school that was close to home, especially with, in a library with all the resources that it would offer. I hope the Board will move forward with this school so my kids will have the chance to attend a high school that is close to home.
Thank you. Judith Harris.
My name's Judith Harris. I chair the San Diego Public Library Foundation. We raise private funds for the branch libraries in San Diego. I've been volunteering in San Diego for over two decades. My focus has always been on education, whether it was arts and culture, whether it was communication, conservation, or literacy. I've long been motivated by the idea of a level playing field and how that is achievable in our world. Education to me is the best answer. You must have the ability to express yourself, to defend your ideas, and to understand the consequences of your actions. When I heard the San Diego Unified School District was considering putting a school in the downtown library, I was ecstatic. What better environment to nurture learning than an entire arena devoted to thought and expression? I imagine the incredible opportunities available for students in this type of collaborative setting. Whether it be arts, computers, engineering, or politics, this student will have access to enormous resources and unlimited hands-on assistance. I applaud the Chair and the Board for having the leadership and the bravery to explore this collaboration and embrace an innovative design of learning and community support. We owe our children this additional chance to succeed. The San Diego Public Library Foundation has private citizens who want to help the downtown students expand their opportunities. Please consider moving this process forward so we can make an informed decision on the success of such an exciting proposition. The San Diego Public Library Foundation is dedicated to helping move this idea into a reality. If I were a downtown parent, I would fight to have my children in such a school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deborah Barrow.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Barrow, Library Director for the City of San Diego. I'd like to give you a glimpse of this amazing library, a jewel for San Diego, from a student's point of view. Everyone's talking about your new cool school located in the downtown library with its grand reading room, technology everywhere, view terraces, sculpture garden, art gallery, and more than 1 million books. You arrive at school quickly. It's just downtown. Your friends took the trolley today. The lobby and garden court are amazing. Your friend says, "Did you see how beautiful the library building looked on the way over here? That dome looks like the one at Balboa Park, and Petco Park is nearby." Let's go over to the coffee cart in front of the library to get a snack. For assembly today, you gather in the library's auditorium. As you walk up to receive your award, your picture is on an enormous screen for all to see. And don't you look great. That someone special is going to know who you are from now on. Classes are exciting. Your teachers really wanted to teach at this new, energy-efficient school and be in the library setting. The school has its own entrance and its own floors, so parents don't have to worry. It's safe. School ends, so you go downstairs and walk around to the library entrance. This is a fantastic, wondrous community space. The library is the best gathering place in town. Mom doesn't have to tell you to go to the library anymore. Everyone is here. With 400 computers, group study rooms, and a technology center, it's a breeze getting homework done. And if you need help, there's trained staff in the homework center and librarians to get you online to the Homework Help Network. Mr. Scott's social studies paper is due in two weeks, so you take a look at the online service called School Rooms to find information on Iran. The information is exactly suited to your grade level. Lucky thing, the library subscribes to so many resources for students. Homework is done, so you go over to the Teens Center, right here in the library, to find the latest book in the Twilight series, or maybe to download a video to your iPod Touch. This new library has the fastest Wi-Fi network in town, and it's free. Better check out the children's room before little sis bugs you to death. The electronic information bulletin board there says, "If you read 10 books for the reading program, you'll get two tickets to the Padres game." Well, it's time to sign up for the Teens program too. You are so happy to be going to this school. Information and knowledge are all around you. All of this and more at school in the new library.
Thank you very much. Board member comment? Mr. Barrera?
No, this is a great project, and absolutely, I appreciate Ms. Andrews and Ms. Via, you know, speaking from Logan Heights and Golden Hill about the opportunities that this can create for kids in our community. And so I'm proud to support this project and to help move it forward. The one thing I would like to do, though, is to amend the motion to add the final sentence in the letter from the ICOC. The ICOC advises the district to ensure that any prepayment of rent or other financial consideration prior to the certificate of completion and the lease commencement date not be released to the city without recourse in the event of a default by the city. So I just think, I would like, I think that's a sensible protection that the ICOC has offered to us, and I would like to add that to the motion.
Yeah, I accept the amendment. Okay, very good. All right. Any other board member comment? If not, then these folks. That passes 3-2. No, the different 3-2.
Okay, the five-minute break.
Okay, five-minute break.
Let's finish up.
She wants to go say hello.
Not a neighborhood school. They can't, charters can't be. They'd have to have open enrollment.
No, charters can give preference in enrollment, and most charters do give preference to the kids who live in, who live in the charter, to the new school.
No, they don't have open enrollment.
I created the, I created the charter.
All right, all right, all right. They did that for High Tech High. They said they got to have open enrollment district-wide as part of the democratic arrangement of being a part of a charter. We do that where every charter in the district has the same rule.
The charter school that I created, it's home school when it initially was chartered. It was on Sixth Avenue, it was home school, it was Florence. You had to give first-line status to kids who lived in Florence, Florence. It's actually encouraged in the law.
The district boundary is not the school.
The home school boundary.
No, no home school.
Yeah, at San Diego High, it's a home school.
Who said that?
It would be designated as the home school.
Well, it hasn't been, but that's the point. The point is, it still has to be decide what the home school is. Because a home school is, you can't make the home school, the boundaries of a charter the same as another school.
You do. You make the boundaries of a charter.
I don't think so. You know better. Who thinks it's a neighborhood school? I don't think it is. She wants some money for her cabinet. I know about it. It doesn't matter, she never got elected anymore. She could sell out for a few months.
I need some mix to my food.
Don't you ever get in that road? That's a good one. Yeah, those are my scars. Well, I got friends that are in there that don't have a lot of money either, but I won't draw it on purpose. I can't afford the fines, much less the bills.
It's only about fines. Fines are everything.
Pardon.
Somebody trying to make a comment here or something?
Where you get fined.
Can I, may I? Yeah.
I can't afford the fines, much less the bills.
Five. Five are pretty expensive.
Five.
Somebody trying to make a comment here or something?
Where you get called.
Can I? May I? Yeah. All right. Let's get going. We'll continue on. The next item up for action is item 509. Mr. Evans, Dr. Evans?
Yes. F09.
F09 is our bell.
Okay.
We want to keep the time.
Okay. This is the proposal to keep the bell times for 2009-10, the same as 2008. I will be pretty brief about this, but...
Move approval. Say. How's that? Take a second, please.
Well, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay. Just, you know, I've been concerned for a long time about, and talk to a lot of parents who are concerned about schools starting too early, and we certainly, in our budget cutting, found a way to move some schools a little earlier and save some money, which made them go to ridiculous time. However, I know that the late times also cause problems, and I guess I'm looking at this in the way that some people who are working on a weight loss program do, which is, you know, you may not be able to lose weight, but you at first at least stop gaining weight. I was very concerned when some of the 7:45 times were being moved as early as 7:15, and I think that's probably as good as we can do for this year, is to not make those nine schools move back earlier and keep their same time along with everybody else. So I just want to be real clear about this, so that what the proposal is, so that there isn't any misunderstanding, because I know there's a lot of confusion when the word goes out very quickly and the word goes out through the schools, what time they're starting and so forth. But again, that the bell times would stay the same, with the exception of one school, which is CPMA, which will have a later start time. I know that is problematic, but it is necessary. When we originally approved about 1 million...
I think you've got support for this.
Okay.
I think...
Does anybody want to hear anything else, or you just want us to vote on it?
Well, we've got some speakers, so...
Okay. Well, let me just make it clear, though, that the nine schools listed here that were slated for going 30 minutes earlier would not go earlier. Everyone would stay the same throughout the district, but I do want to be very clear about this, as far as the CPMA, because that particular one, it would be a $1 million cost to not have them starting at that time. So those are the things that we want to do. And I'll just mention briefly about, since we do want to in the future address the issue of the very early times and the very late times, and I have laid out here the different steps that we could take, and just, one of the things is we're saving $4 million by increasing the ridership on the buses. We'll find out about that. The other is, Mr. DeBeck has brought up certain issues about flexibility. I was already starting to work with one school that had just a few students bussed in and looking at how they could do that flexibly. But I've put down here a timeframe, which everybody can review on the item, in terms of how we would go about getting community input for the next year, so that we wouldn't be in this last-minute bind like we are this year, and would actually begin pretty quickly.
But the mention of nine schools doesn't include a lot of schools that are affected by the, but what you're saying is all schools will revert back to their current year's bell times. That would include some that are not on this list.
Right. But that goes back to the first sentence at the top. Each school would keep the same bell time, 2009-10 as 2008-9.
Okay.
The reason those are mentioned is because those schools had been given notification about being earlier, and then when we moved it up 15 minutes, they were 15 minutes and so forth. So it's just to have every single school listed, so there's no confusion.
Well, okay. Shall we vote?
Yeah. We've got public speakers. We have public speakers. We have Lisa Fishers, I think, Fish.
If you're going to keep it the way that I've been talking.
Okay. Elizabeth Diddo. Okay. And Brooks?
Yes, Sam.
Sam, okay. Thank you very much. Please vote, everybody. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold up. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Got it in the blue list, okay? Okay, we want, we'll let you talk, okay? Diane Frye, Dawn Vesty, Michelle Huber, Jacob Cooper, Kate O'Connell, Allison Dearden, Denise Vedder, and Greg Erickson. Okay? Greg left, okay? That's okay.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Greer, my name is Diane Masser-Frye. I am the mother of two children at Spreckels Elementary in University City, and I am a working professional. I would like to, in respect to the people who have waited four hours for this conversation to happen and who are still here, to at least raise their hands, and so who you are, we have children in the back who've been here for four years, so that they could see this conversation happen. I want to thank all of you for listening, to the concerns that have been raised by your community in the last two weeks. I would like to thank you, Dr. Evans, for bringing forth the proposal to maintain the same bell times for 2009, 2010. We made our voices heard, and you paid attention. For the record, I would like to respectfully present to you a petition requesting that the board reconsider the bell time change and not have late-start schools. I sent this petition out two weeks ago to 30 people, and there are now 955 signatures on that petition. I would like to explain to you why we ask this of you. Many children who attend their neighborhood schools have two working parents or a single parent who works. We have shifted our schedules so that we can pick up and drop off our children, as there are few resources available for before and after-school care. For students in late-start schools, this means parents are arriving at work at 9:30 or later already. Adding 15 minutes may seem insignificant, but when you are already the last to arrive at the office, coming in that much later puts your job in jeopardy. Without available before-school care, parents would be forced to choose between risking their jobs and their livelihoods and leaving their children unsupervised before school. I know that in your deliberations, you considered that this bell time change would be inconvenient for some families, but this is not a matter of convenience. Losing an income, losing health insurance would not be inconvenient. It would be catastrophic and an irresponsible decision on the part of the board. Putting the livelihood of families in jeopardy would be unconscionable, and I applaud your willingness to step back from this decision. Please understand that I am not advocating for children, especially teenagers, starting school before 7:30 a.m. My position advocates for the needs of families who are at late-start schools. I know the data on shifted circadian rhythms in adolescents. I know that from an educational perspective, high school should never start before 8:00 a.m. I hope that you, as a board, and we, as a community, are able to work together to come up with a solution that is driven by sound educational effectiveness and regard for child welfare. One last thought, a simple proposal, that no school start before 7:30 a.m. or after 9:00 a.m. Thank you for your time and attention.
Hi, my name is Dawn Vettis, and I am also a parent of two children at Spreckels Elementary. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Last year, Spreckels started at 9:05 a.m., and I'm very pleased to see the bell times should remain the same in 9:10 as it was in 8:09. However, I personally am still struggling to understand a move to change bell times that was approved basically without a very thorough analysis of the impacts. And I do expect that a thorough analysis, when decisions that impact so many people, be actually made before these decisions happen. And I'm talking about impacts to the children in the district, because increasing the risk that a parent might lose their job is not good for anyone. And increasing the level of stress in the homes of those children is not good, and they can sense when something is wrong. As a parent in this district, I expect any study of bell times will be comprehensive and will include information related to all of the impacts. The impacts on children, working families, busing, extracurricular activities, childcare, and so on. No single piece of this puzzle depicts anything clearly on its own, and all of the relevant questions must be asked and answered. I'm pleased to see that they may be through Agenda Item F04, the Plan for Comprehensive Study of Demographics, Location of Neighborhood Schools, and Transportation. I hope this is truly a comprehensive study. For the past two years, I have had to work with my bosses to adjust my schedule in order to accommodate the late-start time. In my neighborhood, there is no before-school community care that is home-based that transports to my school. And furthermore, if the bell times were any later, it really could impact my job. I believe I'm not alone in this situation, and I live in the neighborhood where I expected my children to be able to go to school. My husband bought the house there purposefully. The closest school to my neighborhood school is a choice ANVEEP school that is very difficult to get into. So I would like this district to make accessible before-school care a priority for those schools that begin near 9 o'clock. There were less than 60 slots for over 750 children, and this was the free system. In addition, I hope that the policy on busing takes into consideration some factor related to the distance traveled and the time on the bus for those children, because I think that's very important. So you have very difficult decisions to make on very critical issues, and I support your decisions when I feel that they're based on relevant facts and information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Denise Vedder, 3209 Madrid Street. I applaud you for your decision. I thank you for listening to us. The one thing that does give me a little bit of pause is the sentence that says, "Any potential changes in bell times for 2010-11 would have to be approved by the board no later than March 15, 2010." And the reason that brings me concern is the way that we found out about this. It was in an email that was sent out the very last day of school, wishing us a happy summer, attached is the PDF. A decision like this affects thousands of families, and actually, it would probably work better for us. We're a working family. But I just think it's wrong for elementary school kids to start school at almost 9:30. It's not teaching them the right discipline of getting up in the morning, getting ready for school, going to school, and then coming home at a time when they have time to do their homework. So I'm actually here to implore you, please, be transparent, involve us, be different. We want a voice. There are kids. You can see how deeply we care. We've stayed here for five hours. So please, any potential changes in bell times, have a public meeting, involve us, get our input, make us part of the decision. Many of us feel like you don't think we're very smart because you thought you could sneak it by us. Well, I appreciate it very much, but please, 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 keep us involved. We want to be involved. We're here to help.
Speaker. My name is Michelle Huber, and I live at 2248 Mendocino Boulevard, and I want to thank all of you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I won't take up too much of your time, because I do believe that the board is now changing their position on this. However, I believe that the board is changing their position on this because of the massive letter campaign that we, as parents, put together. And it started with one person, and it blossomed into over 1,000 people, because if you look at it now, there's over 1,000 people on that petition. And there are other people who have sent letters who have not signed that petition. While I understand the desire to accommodate the students who have to get up, as Ms. Nakamura said, at 5:00 a.m., to get on a boat, bus at sick, to get at school at 7:00, I also feel that 7% to 9% of our student population, the rest of our students, are attempting to attend their neighborhood schools. And for our children to be penalized because other people choose, under whatever title you call it, Veep or whatever, for our children to be penalized with school hour changes to accommodate other students is not fair to us. So I would like to say that asking parents to put their children... I also don't need to tell you that research has shown what type of education children need. They need to be at school early. They learn best in the morning. They don't learn best when they get out of school at 4:00 in the afternoon. And asking a kindergartner to get out of school at 4:00 in the afternoon is absolutely ridiculous. Mr. Evans, I appreciate your offer to create a community forum. I think that's the best way to handle this. I think we need to work together as a team to come up with a solution, and I do appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. DeBeck and Ms. Jackson, for saying no to the bell changes to begin with. Thank you, Mr. Evans, for reconsidering. Mr. Barrera, we're still wondering where you stand, because you never once voiced an opinion, and we all watched that video from the last meeting. We are also very aware of what was said by whom. And I have to say, Ms. Nakamura, in voting yes to these changes without community input and for the only letter that I have seen from you that was very, how do I put it, divisive, insulting, and creating an issue of the haves and have-nots, I found that very disappointing. And I would like to say that that one letter that you sent out to one parent has reached those 1,000 people, and we will keep that letter in mind when we vote in the 2010 election. Thank you for your time. I hope that you will continue to keep that 2010, excuse me, the bell times, back where they belong. Thank you.
Is Jacob still here?
My name is Kate O'Connor, and I am bringing a very interesting perspective to this debate. I'm a teacher at San Diego High School, which, by the way, offers a very good education if the people who are scared of it are still here. I'm going to send my own children there. And I also have two sons at McKinley Elementary, which is a feeder school in the Roosevelt-San Diego High pathway. And for me, these bell times have been extremely challenging, because I have to be at work by 7:15, when my children don't have to be at school until 9:10. I was unable to get a spot in the 6:00 to 6:00 early morning care, and so I have relied on the kindness of friends and family cobbling together a schedule to get my children to school every single day. In addition to that, I have two other children that I have to take other places to get, to be cared for while I go to work. Also, as a teacher at San Diego High, having teenagers go to school as early as they are, I know there's lots of data, people have already mentioned it, but I will tell you, empirical evidence from my experience in the classroom, frankly, first period's the easiest class to teach, because half of them don't come, and the other half that are there are asleep. And unfortunately, it may be easier, but it's not educationally sound. It's detrimental to our students who are already performing below grade level, and it's absolutely unconscionable to keep teenagers, if you know teenagers at all, which I'm sure all of you were, at least you were one one day, if you don't have one in your life right now. They go to bed late, and they sleep late. And we, most of my students take public transportation, and they live in the neighborhood, and they still get up at 5:00, 5:30, 6:00 to get on 6:15 buses, so they're not tardy. And it's just, it's not a good model at all. And particularly, if you know little children, they are more likely to get up at 6:00 a.m. than they are to get up at 8:00 a.m. And so the three hours that you have your children in the morning awake and not at school is a dead space that you're really struggling to try to fill up and keep them occupied without parking them in front of the TV. And then in the afternoon, I mean, my kindergartner has a flair for the dramatic, I will admit, but he has come out of school sobbing about how starving he is, because he has eaten lunch at 12:00 and is getting out of school at 3:40. Now, they do have a snack break, but, you know, kindergartners, he'd rather run than eat. So by the time the school is over, he's sobbing, and he's, "I'm so hungry." I've taken to stocking my car like a Costco, because I have to feed the children as they're getting in the car, because they're so overwrought with their hunger. So those issues aside, everything, you know, I see that you have a very clearly laid-out plan to look at all the issues. The other, the one other thing that I thought of that I want to say about this issue is, our schools are so different. There's every single school, the school I work at is so different from the school my children attend, and doing it across the board, anything for all of them is completely ridiculous and uninformal.
Is Allison here? Okay, very good.
I'm Allison Dearden, 3144 Bancroft Street. I'm also a parent of a child, well, I had two children at McKinley Elementary this year. Starting next year, I'll have one at Roosevelt and one at McKinley. So for me, I was a little bit excited when I saw that the Roosevelt times were a little bit later, but then when I realized McKinley was going later as well, I was not happy at all. This past year, I was hoping that it would go the opposite, that they would get closer together. Right now, there's about a two-hour difference between when my middle school child will start and when my elementary school child will start. And I have a one-year-old that I need to shuffle around, too, and jobs. So it gets very difficult with all of the juggling. Real quick, though, this, just to, as a parent, to let you know how it went, this year, already starting so late, was not good. My son had to be pulled out once a week for his, he does, he's a sailor. He does competitive sailing. You can't, that's one sport you just can't do when it's dark. So I had to take him out once a week early, just so he could go to his, so he could have his after-school activity. That's also very, very part of his life, very important for his confidence. And I know a lot of us parents have kids that do different things after school, and if they're in a different community that doesn't accommodate your late schedule, you can't, either you can't have your child participate in that event, or you have to try to find an event that can accommodate the late schedule. And I think after-school activities are just as important as being at school, because our schools can't offer, you know, they can't offer all of these sports. Also, my son, who was in fifth grade, who I was, had to take out early, he came home with headaches a lot, and I don't know if it was just that he was so exhausted, or hungry, or what. And I don't know if it was just that he was so exhausted or hungry or what, but he'd never complained about that in the past. And I attribute that to having been up and active so long and just exhausted. I know they were starving by the time lunch rolled around. They had to swap the recesses, so they didn't get a morning activity break. They went straight through in the morning because they had so little time for learning. Also, the prime... Well, we've already mentioned... I won't try not to mention things that have already been mentioned. But our school also is unique in that you could probably count on your hands the number of kids that actually ride a bus. So, when I saw the option of flexibility, I think that needs to be looked at for some of our schools. And across the board, time change isn't a good idea. Just every school's so different. That's already been mentioned. But a flexibility would work really well for our school, a flexible time start. And also, maybe Roosevelt, I don't know. I haven't experienced that yet. But it's going to be really difficult when you have kids going, starting at two hours... You know, it's two-hour time difference and trying to juggle that. But again, I think a big thing is the after-school activities. The kids come home, and it's dinnertime. And then they end up in the morning. You think, maybe they could do something in the morning, but they end up just sleeping. So, kind of an unproductive morning, too.
Ms. Nakamura followed by Dr. Evans.
Yeah, I have to say, I've received some really ugly emails from people. You know, unfortunately, we have children that don't have a voice. They aren't being heard, that get on the bus at 6:00 in the morning. Or they don't, and they miss. They miss school. And they're not focused when they get there, and they have stomachaches, and they have, you know, all kinds of trouble. And we have teachers, and when you start very early, that are also tired. And those are realities. And I'm willing to take the hit for being the voice for those kids any day of the week. I think that that's important. But I've also been a mother, and these kids have played soccer and have after-school activities. And I realize the pressures of that as well, that adjustments don't come easy when you've got such complex schedules. I think the problem with this is that I don't think either group should be penalized. And it's not just after-school. I understand there are parents that have jobs, too, because I've also been there. You know, the complexities of today's society and the demands on mothers and fathers make it, I think, imperative that we really start taking a look at how we can make our schools function better. I don't think it should go too late. Personally, I'd like to see no school start before 7:30, but no school let out after 3:30. It's got to be... You know, we need to find an answer at both ends. The problem is that that's a very expensive proposition. But you know, there's all types of research about teenagers. It doesn't do for little kids to be grumpy and tired in the morning and to show up. Because those are children whose education is in our hands, and that's our responsibility. And you start off on the wrong foot in elementary school, and you never catch up. And then there's a bad reputation at the school about those kids who arrive on the bus. Well, they're just bad kids. Well, you know, maybe they're just tired. Maybe they're just cranky. You know, maybe they're just little kids. And then they develop a reputation, and it's hard to come back from that. So, if I have to be the voice for those little kids, I'm happy to do that. But the truth of the matter is that we need to find something reasonable, that they're all little kids, and they are all families, and we're all doing the best that we possibly can. And we don't need to make things any harder than they have to be. But to me, common sense at both ends, you know, no school starts after 7:30 and no school ends after 3:30, I think, is probably the way that we need to go. So, I'm sympathetic to both sides. I really, truly am. But in this budget crisis, and it is a budget crisis, and I've said this in an email, and I don't back off from that, if I have to choose between the two, you know, I'm the child whose education is in my hands, whose heart and soul and how they feel about school, you know, I have to make sure that that child's voice is heard as well. But I'm glad we've come up with... We've decided that we will, you know, go ahead and keep it at status quo and that we found some answers in that. Although, you know, I think the superintendent's going to start pulling his hair out as we, you know, pull back from decisions that we've already made. It's awfully hard on the staff when we do that. But don't underestimate what it costs to run a bus. You would be astonished.
Shocked.
It's expensive.
Dr. Evans?
All right. I want to thank all the parents who stayed here so many hours to talk about this. And I also will myself take responsibility for the confusion and the distress that people have felt. I think I was somewhat overambitious in my situation of trying to fix a situation, particularly for the very early times. And I've always been bothered that, you know, the school schedule and the bus schedule is kind of the tail wagging the dog rather than the other way around. And so, I think it's... I just want to comment that I think it's... We're going to keep the status quo for now, but I am not giving up on improving the situation from what it is. Because people have adapted to the way it is, but that does not mean it's good. It's not good for kids getting up at 7:15 to start high school. And it's not good for kids that are starting elementary school at 9:05 when their parents have to be at work by then. And so, I just want to be very specific about what can come out of this in a positive way, which is the steps that we're going to take to try to fix this in the long run. And as I mentioned, first of all, the first step will be for the district to see what we can do, both by the fact that we have consolidated routes and reduced busing, to see if that gives us some more flexibility in when we can deliver the kids to school, which are both of the points in Items 1 and 2 in the plan, which is basically in the first year of school. Because there are a lot of things that change during the first week of school. And then, the whole point from there, on the third point, is to investigate what can be done at the school site level and the cluster level. And one of the things, and one of the mothers mentioned this and it has come up other times, is the fact that the coordination of when the schools start within a cluster. So, there's a middle and an elementary and a high school, and they're not necessarily... Sometimes, they start at the exact same time, which makes it impossible for the parents to get them to both at on-time. So, there are things that we can look at, but this needs to be at school site level, looking at if there are just a few kids bussed, what can be done for the flexibility with those kids, what are the desires of the community in terms of the time. And along with that, it's very important that when communities are discussing this, that they are fully educated about the bussing issue in this district. Some people do not realize that, particularly in the neighborhood where I live, for example, the school would be closed if there were not kids bussed in. Because we have a high school that has 60% of the kids are bussed in. So, while we are bothered by having to adjust our schedule to the buses, it's also the reason that school is open in certain neighborhoods. There are a lot of factors about the law and special ed and program improvement and so forth. So, we just wanted to give the community the information so that you can sit down with that and decide what you think would be best, and then see how that fits into the whole district financial picture. And that's why I have laid out very deliberately and slowly, in response to the community involved, which is, first of all, the community having these meetings, and then there's a presentation to the board of the recommended bell schedule for the following year at the beginning of February. The board looks that over and gets input, and then makes any modifications for the second meeting in February. And then, finally, at the first meeting in March, a final vote on that bell schedule, which could even possibly be absolutely no changes. I mean, that's one alternative, but at least it would have been fully vetted within the community. So, I think that's really important, both for the board that's voting on this and the community to know that that's what we're committing ourselves to.
Barrera, please.
Yeah, just very quickly, I want to thank Dr. Evans for the thoughtful motion and for bringing this back in front of us. And definitely thank the parents at a number of different schools. I had a great conversation with the parents at Golden Hill Elementary about, you know, how difficult it would have been for them to, you know, have their kids start at 9:30 in the morning. And I think that as we go through this process that Dr. Evans is recommending, particularly the idea of seeing that schools have flexibility... I know Mr. DeBeck has even suggested the idea of, you know, allowing schools to develop split schedules, if that's something that would help them, you know, deal with kids who are bussed in and not have to accommodate... And not have to adjust their schedule in ways that don't make sense for kids from the neighborhood. So, I think as long as we're, you know, as long as we're following the process that Dr. Evans has laid out, getting a lot of community, you know, input, you know, into figuring this out as we go forward, and allowing a lot of flexibility at the school level, I think this is important.
Okay. Thank you very much for waiting here, everyone. No other comments, please vote.
We're waiting on you.
Okay. If that...
Thank you. The next item for consideration is H01. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. I'm sorry. H01 is a resolution for our 0910 text.
You skipped F10.
We did add F10. We did it earlier.
Didn't we? There's a group... Okay, I apologize.
I have a motion in a second. For a trans note. Any discussion board members? Dr. Greer, any comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Please vote. That pass is 5-0. The next item is H03.
Vote for...
Second.
Session, I have a comment about this item. And we may have... Okay, Letitia can come forward. While she's coming forward, and I think I've mentioned this already, to staff, you come forward. I have a concern because even though we voted to go from 8 to 15 on our budget deliberation, before we took that action, we had a $6 million contract with First Student. And after we took that action, it still comes back as $6 million. So, I don't understand. It's not reflective of the action that we took. So, you want to... Art, you want to come up and talk about that a little bit?
First of all, isn't this up to $6 million?
Up to...
Up to $6 million?
For two years.
Okay.
The item that's before you is a two-year contract. The cost based upon 43 buses per year would be approximately $3 million per year. So, that's why it's listed at $6 million. The report that you have from the Portland Group and also the determination of staff is that the district will need to have 43 contracted buses for this coming school year. And so, that would be the $3 million that would be for this next year.
Okay. But I guess my point is, and my peers just corrected me, is up to. Because I can't see how before we did the decision to go from 8 to 15, it was $3 million. And now, we did the decision, it's still $3 million. But it shouldn't be $3 million. It should be like 1.5 or a little bit more. Okay? That's what I think. I don't know.
I believe that has been taken into account, and the number still is 43 buses will be needed, which is about 8% of the buses needed to transport students for next year.
Wait a minute. How could that be? Wait a minute. Just a second here. I was okay with the up to part. Okay. But if you're going to stand there and tell me that when we said we were transporting buses based upon eight students, okay, and a bus route for a bus route to occur, then we needed 43 buses, then the board voted, you know, for budgetary reasons to increase that number from 8 to 15. It would seem that there would have been an adjustment in the amount of buses. Now, that conversation occurred after... Because this is the second time around for this, I think. That conversation occurred after this. And so, I would think that there would have been some adjustments prior to that coming back. But as long as we understand it's up to and it's not concrete 43, we might be able to make it. But we have some comments here, so we'll hear from them.
Superintendent, one...
Yes.
Just real quick, we want to be clear now. When we started talking about moving from 8 to 15, we were talking about magnet buses and Veep buses. When we're talking about special needs buses, and there's an IEP that we have to transport these children, there may be situations to be very transparent and clear with the board where you have less than 15 kids on that bus. Just want to make sure you understood that. Because we're talking about moving from eight riders to 15. That was primarily for Veep and for magnets. But we still...
I'm serious talking about the fact that there's about 2,000 students.
I understand that. I'm just simply saying, I just wanted to just, you know, we're going to run 15 kids on a bus every time we can. But if we have special ed kids that we have to bus, and there's 12 kids on a bus or 10 kids on a bus, we may have to run a few of those buses. Those First Student buses, you may recall, they have buses that are smaller than our big 74-passenger buses.
We have four different types of buses that's in this for us to choose from to meet our needs.
That's the only point I want. Okay. Letitia?
Good evening, Superintendent Greer, President Jackson, and school board members. I speak to you as a CSA Labor Relations Representative, Letitia Mungian. My address is on file. I come to you with a couple of questions for your review and consideration. I'm actually asking that you pull this agenda item as an official action due to the fact that I believe that there has been a lot of lack of information. First of all, there's been no communication to CSA on such a high economic value agenda item. There's been zero communication on this issue until I found this on the agenda. I want to put forward on the record, and I would ask that you have your fiscal department audit this. Two prior board meetings since January 1 of '09, you've already approved payment of over in excess of monies that were owed to First Student. And if my numbers are incorrect, I like to be proven so. Because my records and my review of your board agendas happen every weekend before every Tuesday that you have a board meeting. And what I'm concerned about is the continual codependency on First Student. Okay? And I understand, and I want to give you, and Dr. Greer, credit for the fact that you've had Phil Stover here, who's opened up the books and created a clarity for CSA that it's never been there. And the honesty, the integrity, the openness that this man has offered to this district through the work that we've done. Okay? And I value that. My unit values it because we've been able to see there's a lot of darkness in these departments. And until we see the numbers and we see the work... And I think that what's referenced in this board agenda item is a reference of the work he's brought forward to this district, which is about... When I started this job five and a half years ago, you had 563 routes going out to First Student. Since then, it's decreased, and we value that, and we want that. And our workers want to be able to work. Our workers don't want to be able to be at a ready room with a split break of two hours. They want to be out there driving our kids to and from where they need to go and taking them home. But I want to add some highlights for you. First of all, I would ask, why is that the contract amount has not been modified since your last board meeting when you guys articulated, you guys as a collective articulated, the need and the interest and the priority as a school board member? Why is that spirit of your board not being reflected in your board agenda item? That's the first question I would ask. Number two, I would ask that I be proven incorrect if the issues that you've been overpaying First Student, that you've over exceeded what you say you're going to pay. You know, the concept of the contract is up to has always been over. You've always paid more than what the minimum amount is. The other part of this is, is when you look at your budget deficit issues that you previously voted on, this needs to be looked in conjunction with FO4. This needs to be looked in conjunction with line item 20. This needs to be looked up in line number 21. You're taking actions where the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing, and all of it impacts transportation. I'm not sure if anybody's connecting those dots for you, but I feel like I have to because there's a huge disconnect in some of the decision-making that you're taking. But the one thing I want to say is this, is that as you look at First Student, a $6 million codependency on a contract carrier should be something that you should be cautious of. Thank you.
Any more comments?
Well, yeah, I could ask a question.
Sure.
When was this agreement proposal put to First Student? Was it well before we made any of these actions that we've talked about? You see, I always look at these as being up to. And so, then, if you were giving you direction, like I think this board has been giving you about, let's bring a lot of this contract work inside, that if you've already been out talking to First Student, you've probably talked to them about a larger possible piece of the transportation pie than they're really going to get. Okay? And so, then, they bid whatever they bid, and you say up to 6... Yeah, this says a two-year, $6 million agreement, but my understanding is that's the limit, not the floor. And so, I'm assuming that instead of going back and renegotiating, that you're just talking with them about a possible contract, and this is the last contract you talked about with them, leaving that alone. So, I don't know. I mean, I have to trust that you're not gonna spend the $6 million, but maybe we need to put a lid on it.
Superintendent Greer?
You board members may recall that this bid went out to First Student before we ever came up with the change in ridership. And this isn't up to an amount. This is not to exceed. And I have every confidence that our finance department and Art's gonna be all over this with Alex's help, that we're gonna monitor it carefully. One of the ways that we get out of the First Student contract and bring all of the transportation house, which I'd like to see us do, and I think some of you might would too, is in a very hard economic time, we have not had the resources and do not have the resources to purchase or lease the buses. And we've got to try to be creative and look at ways, if this is a priority for the board to get these buses back in-house, to be able to do that. It may not be something that is acceptable to everyone, but I think that the staff and I will work very hard to try to find some options of how to do that. But the ultimate decision's gonna be up to the board. In the meantime, quite frankly, we're in a position where the clock is ticking. We have to enter into this contract if we're gonna do business with them. And quite frankly, we do not have the internal capacity to do this on our own right now. If we can reduce the number of buses, we will. But right now, we find ourselves where we are.
Mr. Herrera?
Yeah, just very clear. I'm gonna approve this in some ways against my better judgment because I do feel uncomfortable about a contract that's as open-ended as that, as up to $6 million, when I think it's the intention certainly of everybody. I think, well, it's my intention that we phase out this contract as quickly as possible. And I do think that there has to be a freeing up of some of the vehicles in our fleet as a result of the move from eight to 15 as a first step towards, you know, figuring out how to increase the number of buses available. So, yeah, I'll approve this, but I think we're gonna keep an eagle eye on this one and make sure that we're not getting anywhere near that $6 million.
Any more comments? Please vote. That passes 401. The next item up is HO4.
May I ask, is there any way we could turn these lights down? I am getting a splitting headache.
So moved.
Okay.
I know, HO4.
Can I get a second? Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for HO4. Any discussion? This is a need for fully qualified educators. Okay, please vote.
It's easy.
I would say you don't.
All right. That passes 5-0. We move on to the I agenda, and this is the consent agenda. We do have some speakers. In addition to I-15, I-35, I-96, which have been drawn, we have...
Well, I'll move all of them except for ones that are speakers on.
Okay, and well, I want to get some. I have I-37 and I-42 that I want to pull.
Your speaker.
Yep, thank you. Okay, for the speakers, oh, that was a motion for the ones, except the ones that have speakers.
Yes.
Let me give all the numbers. Somebody wants to pull any other ones? I'm sorry, board members? Okay. Okay, I-01 has one speaker, Mike. And Mike is speaking several times, so be brief, be very brief. Okay? I-03 has a speaker, Ernest. Is this Mike Goldwater again? Ernest Goldwater?
I'm Goldwater.
No, I know, I said Ernest, so this is another one.
It's a different Goldwater?
Good afternoon, good evening, Board of Education. I'm done, goodbye. You said be brief. I apologize. Yes, I missed you.
I know, and you owe me. Big time.
Okay, Mike Goldwater. Everybody knows where I am and where I am as far as to locate me. I apologize, John. Specifically, what did you say about items to be taken off calendar?
I said I want, on these, on the consent agenda, I wanted to vote on all the ones except the ones that there were speakers on.
Okay, because I was coming into the building. I appreciate that.
And so what I'm hoping is that the president will identify those, I'm already starting marking them, by the numbers, and then we just vote for the rest of them.
Okay. I'd like to speak on I.001, the First Amendment Agreement.
That's been pulled.
Pardon?
That's been pulled.
Thank you. Then I'll have to speak on it. Should I continue down the line? Madam President?
Go ahead and speak on I-01. Well, no, I'm sorry, you want the whole list. I'm sorry, I didn't want the whole list of those that have been speakers. You have I-01, I-03, I-36, I-75, I-101.
The areas I'm gonna...
I pulled 37 and 42 myself. And then, just a second, we haven't set your timer yet.
I.075, is that pulled?
That's what we're supposed to do.
Yes.
Thank you. That's been pulled.
Okay, go ahead and speak.
And I.036 was pulled?
Yes, please speak.
It's yours.
If it was pulled, there's no need to speak on it?
No, it's pulled for you to speak.
Okay, but it wasn't pulled for actions vote?
No.
Okay.
What we're doing now is, we're not usually taking action until other people have spoken, and then we identify which ones we want to pull at that particular time.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak on I.003 right now. Would that be all right?
Are you gonna skip I-01?
Well, I.001 is very simple. I would like to have legal counsel in support of Mr. Breezy in-house. The $75,000 spent on that with an additional $5,000, I think, should be utilized in-house. And general counsel for outside consulting, I believe should not, the board should vote against that.
Okay, very good.
We should keep things in-house.
That's the trans?
Okay.
Oh, no, okay.
Okay, I-03 then.
I.03, there are two areas of concerns I have. The first one is that looking at the 66 pages that are on the line on the computer, I noticed that there were several areas in which retired administrators are being brought back, retired principals. I believe that's wrong. I believe that if a person is retired from the San Diego Unified School District, they are retired from the San Diego Unified School District. We should not hire them back at an inflated rate per hour to do, in this case, administration work. If they wish to do so, there are 41 other school districts in the County of San Diego they can utilize their talents at, not the San Diego Unified. The other area I'm concerned with, and I'm going to give Michelle Ward this documentation to give to you. I'd like to discuss an area that I've discussed with the board before. There is a...
What is this item?
This is I.003.
Okay.
This is general information. There is an individual that you're being handed, the eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper, there's a person's name on it. That individual, we are very concerned that he still is a zone manager for the San Diego Unified. I have spoken on this on several occasions. Today is a little different because the person that was involved with this particular zone manager, the person that was harmed by him, the person that was a target of this individual, the person that this individual bullied, and the person that this one individual harmed is going to be speaking after me. He decided to finally come forward and to speak. I believe that the person's name that you have in front of you is incompetent, he's a bully, and he's undeserving of the position. But that's only my opinion. I'd like to turn the microphone over and out to the individual who was pointed.
No, 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 before you do that, because you're not coming back up again, so go ahead and hit your items, and the person has a speaker, and I'll get you down.
Okay, so you want me to go through all the items?
Yeah, you've got two more items that you want to hit on real quick.
Yes, I.036.
Yes.
This is the agreement with the Apex Learning to provide district-wide access to learning as I-HI, and this is a concern that our superintendent, Terry Greer, has a kindred to. And what I'm looking at is $1.89 million involved in this. The question I have is this. Is the superintendent aware that the NCAA, the National Collision Athletico Association, does not accept some of the courses of the Apex? And therefore, the possibility that some of our students who graduate, who have scholarships to go to other colleges, that maybe they will lose their scholarships because the courses they took to graduate through Apex, that is San Diego Unified, they will no longer be able to continue their education through scholarships because scholarships will be pulled? I'm asking the question, is our superintendent, is he aware of that?
He's up there, he's fine. Dr. Greer?
Darryl Agasse, who's sitting right behind you, and Karen Bachover, has been working on the acceptance of these courses by the university systems in California and the NCAA for the entire year, and they have assured me that these courses are accepted as long as students score a high enough level. These courses are approved by the Northwest Association of Colleges and Schools.
Okay, but the question I ask is, as Mr. Breezy, the attorney, would be concerned about...
Mike, if you've got evidence that the NCAA won't accept any coursework we have, please provide it to us.
Okay, so there is evidence that will be provided.
I said, if you have evidence that they won't, you're the one that's come forward and said that it's not accepted. And if you've got evidence that it's not, I would appreciate you giving that to us because it's contrary to what we've been told.
I will go ahead and try to produce that evidence. My concern was to bring it up to the public, there's a possibility that it may not be accepted.
Okay, thank you. How about I-075?
Okay, the other item is, the last one would be I.075. And this is an agreement with Pacific Education Consultants for a total of $45,000 for special education. My concern is the fact that this is going back to the year 2003 when this former superintendent made contact and dealing with an Australian corporation. Why are we going outside the San Diego Unified when there's a possibility, we already have people trained in this area that can train other San Diego Unified teachers involved here? I do believe we have several people with a master's degree. I also believe we have several people with a doctorate or terminal degree who can teach other San Diego Unified instructors, teachers in this. Why are we going outside spending $45,000 with a relationship that we've had since 2003 when we're trying to keep things in-house?
So noted, very good.
I'm sorry?
I said so noted.
Okay, well, I'm asking the superintendent a question.
Well, he doesn't have to answer that question.
I'm sorry?
He doesn't have to answer that question. Your comments are to us.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And after me is another gentleman.
Ernest, you want to come forward and tell me your last name, please?
Good evening. My name is Ernest Azakar. I am currently employed with the San Diego Unified School District as a Building Service Supervisor 1. And I'm here to speak out against this individual. I'm appalled that he was, when I heard he was promoted to a zone manager, because I was personally harassed for two years by this individual. And then I was also threatened right in front of a union representative that he would make sure that I would never get promoted higher than a Building Service Supervisor 1. The next day, I filed a complaint. It was quashed by the head of Human Resources. But as far as I'm concerned, he succeeded in his threat because it was very coincidental that I had worked at the time for 13 years with the school district with not an incident or a complaint or anything put in my file. But one month after I filed a complaint against this individual, I had two letters of reprimand and a special evaluation for termination. And I feel he succeeded is because those are still in my file today. And I just feel that this individual is detrimental to the district and children. That's all I just wanted to address you with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That up here with the... It was with I-03. Okay, Ms. Monjiya. I'm gonna get it right one of these days. Monjiya, I just want to just...
Okay, let's all do it together.
Monjiya.
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 Like a moon and a guia.
Okay, Monjiya.
Thank you, President Jackson.
I got it tonight. Next time out.
It's all good, it's all good. I know it's long. So I'm speaking about item I-004, and it involves our fiscal department and financial reporting software. And the only thing I have to say is, you know, the last three board meetings, I brought issues forward for your concern, and they've all been voted down. And I'm hoping I had a bit of a sidebar with Dr. Greer about the district's actions and your votes that you take on a daily basis and the voice that you give. All the employees of the district is basically earmarked on how you vote. You value what you value by your votes. And the one thing that I'm asking you is that there is now a recommendation before you regarding $1.3 million. All these millions of dollars that you continue to look at, and we talk about cost savings, and we talk about takeaways for employees, and we talk about respect for our workers. But I have to tell you that during this economic time, I believe in optimization, I believe in having technology, I believe it makes us more efficient. But when I look at, if you're having to decide between laying off my workers, which I have people who are gonna be on unemployment next Wednesday, I need you to know that. I don't think anybody's actually told you that. But I do have people who have been given pink slips and who will be at the door on Wednesday. Not sure that you've been told that accurately by HR, but I'm telling you now that I have people who will be on unemployment who have mortgage payments like all of you do, and I know that. My concern is with this, I'm not sure that this is the best economic time to be investing in a financial software. I was here, I was hired by CSCA right after you purchased PeopleSoft. PeopleSoft in itself, it was a bundled package that the district paid for. We filed lawsuits about it, and we won it at PERB and all that great stuff that goes on when you file litigation. But the one thing that I noticed during the purchase of PeopleSoft is that you paid 400% more in the modifications than you did in the actual software. And I've lived it because it's been on the back of classified workers. So I have to tell you, if this company's here, that you actually get briefed on the purpose behind this financial software, because to go down this path where you're investing this much money, when I have people going out on the street, that raises concerns about your values and your priorities. Thank you.
Gabby Barnes. I have Pete Spencer and Kevin Carlin. Gabby Barnes is speaking on item 1088.
Thank you. I'm Gabby Barnes, I'm working in the landscaping department, and I work with CSCA as a job steward in the landscaping department. We have trained arborists working in the landscaping department right now. We did this work in the past. This work has not always been contracted out. Please consider having a tree crew, which could include a dump truck, one crew truck, and the equipment necessary, some equipment which we still have, which is not being used, is just sitting around. The dump truck and the crew trucks in the past has always been used on the weekends, and it could be overtime or it could be something else. I request that this agenda be pulled and discussed. I can provide you with many good arguments to consider for creating our own tree crew, and only one of them being the preventing of accidents from happening before branches or trees fall or before property or person injury happens. You can imagine the amount of trees that need to be trimmed in our district. A tree crew would be busy every day of the year. Consider the amount of money spent currently and the scope of work that contractors do and the cost of creating and maintaining our own crew. Would the costs be similar? Thank you for consideration.
Okay, thank you. We have Pete Spencer and Kevin Carlin speaking on item I-099.
Madam President, members of the board, members of staff, I'm Kevin Carlin, I'm here on behalf of Pete Spencer and Audio Associates. Mr. Spencer could not stay for the meeting. I have submitted earlier today to the board secretary as well as the Assistant General Counsel a detailed 12-page legal brief. I made extra copies and submitted those for the record. My comments address the district's RFP number 8922002, which relates to the installation of the I-21 interactive classrooms. Basically, we're asking that the district not award the contracts which are currently before you for values up to $25 million each to contracts. It's my understanding that there's also an addendum whereby those contracts can be renewed for an additional period of time. So you have up to $100 million for technology upgrades. Our concern on this is not so much with regard to the purchase of equipment by way of the CMAS contracting method, which is published scheduled rates that are good statewide. Our concern is the fact that this is being bundled with, and these contractors are being asked to perform construction contracts, not just the delivery of equipment and materials. And so I've set forth on page two the eight specific objections, the legal grounds, I would contend, that prohibit and prevent the school district from moving forward with these contracts. And then the subsequent pages are the more specific factual analysis applying those legal points, why it is... points, why it is that the school cannot award these contracts. We are prepared to move forward with litigation if necessary to enjoin the district from moving forward with these. The legal basis of that is set forth as well. And basically, the purpose of these statutes that we contend would be being violated is to prevent fraud, favoritism, corruption, avoid the misuse of public funds, and stimulate advantageous marketplace competition. Basically, these are unfettered contracts for construction services that are being put in a different package. They're being characterized as CMAS contracts, but in effect, they're CMAS and construction service contracts. And we believe that the construction service contract should be bid separately.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Board members, the items that you wish to pull. Anyone wants to pull any items?
Well, I didn't want to pull an item. I wanted to talk about one that's already been spoken on.
But you have to pull it, because we didn't pull anything until they spoke.
No, if it's already been discussed, we can just talk about it, I think. I don't have to pull it. It was pulled. I want to talk about the 36.
Number 36?
Yeah, oh, 36. It's Apex.
Okay.
I want to pull 99.
99, okay. So I have 36, 99 for more discussion. Yeah, I have 37 and 42 for more discussion. Anyone else have any other items for more discussion? Let's see here. Just a second here. Somebody else spoke. Gabby spoke. I.88 for discussion as well. So the motion Mr. Dibek you want to make earlier, everything else can be approved except for those items.
Oh, I.004.
I.004, okay. Okay, any other ones? Okay, Mr. Dibek's motion earlier to approve all the rest of them.
I'd second it.
Will second it. Please vote on those items. Okay, so now, let's start this list here.
We'll start with number 36 first. 36 is Apex?
I think it was four, it doesn't matter. I just had that...
Okay, 36 is Apex.
Yeah.
And I don't want to get into a long debate, but I had questions, and I wrote them down a while before this first discussion. You know, there's statements here about, that they're accredited, but there's no statements in here about, it says, high school AP exam courses. I don't know, I can't be sure that, for example, that these courses would be treated the same by the universities as other AP courses. Unless I have evidence of that, I mean, the claim is one thing, but the proof is different. The same thing is, are they California State University accepted? Okay? Well, but that's a yes, but see, the point is... Let him explain it. Which of the courses in the list are and which are not, and do the people that take them know that? Are they all approved?
The A to G courses are approved, and the AP courses are approved.
And they're identified as such?
They are identified as such. We have a letter from CSU that also says they will accept these courses through December 10th, through December of 2010. And if you'll notice on our three-year agreement, we broke the middle point at the December 2010 so that we could then ensure that Apex was going to be, continued to be approved under new policies being set forth December 10th, or December of 2010.
Well, in light of the, I'll call it criticism, I'd like to see those in the future. I'm not going to go through it now. I mean, my take on this is, I believe you, but as long as there are people raising issues about it, I think part of the documentation would be to show either the letter that states that all the courses are acceptable or not, or whatever, you know, communication you have to deal with. Basically, I'm willing to accept it just as it stands. You told me so, I believe you.
We'll also put the letter on the web page for people to be able to link to and read.
But if a kid signs up for it, and then it turns out to be a disappointment to them, that would be unfortunate.
There are courses where we note, you know, for example, the science courses that needed, need the wet lab on the facility. So in our applications, courses that have questions as to whether they will apply for everything are clearly noted for parents.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, with your pleasure for number 36.
Move, approve.
Okay. Next one following in the series is numbers 37 and 42, and I pulled those. I did talk with, and spoke with Mr. Morris, Chuck Morris, before he left about these, and I'm not quite sure what the take on them was. And I put these together, but certainly they can be taken apart. The first one, I.37, I had a concern because this does involve Title I funds. We are looking at different uses for Title I funds. I know that they did a pilot on these programs last year. I'm not sure about a district-wide program, and so I'm concerned with how the Title I funds are being spent, and right now, much before they go out to the schools to help us reduce class size, and there was no response on that. So I can't support item 37 because it is a different use of a Title I fund that was not...
Question.
Yes.
My reading of this is that there's no cost, that this is money that's already been paid, and they're just going to finish it out through that time. So there's no use of Title I funds. Okay.
And that's okay. I just want to make sure it does not continue on. Okay. Okay, an item...
Well, let's vote on it.
Okay, you can move that one. Okay. Okay, an item 42, the question that I had around this was a little bit different, and certainly, and I know it wasn't time prior to now for him to research this. The question that I had around this was the fact that we are able to get college courses online. And my question was, was AP courses actually outdated? And in a sense that the students take the course, they pay for the exam later on, and then they get their acceptance of the course, whether they pass the final exam or not. When in actuality, we already have courses that kids can take online to get credit for throughout the year without having to take a test at the end. So it was more pushing for a modification to start having us look in a different direction and not just relying on the AP concept so much, because there are a lot of college courses online that are available to our students now that they're actually using and can get credit for, that may not cost us $85 per student, or, you know, a little bit less. And those are my comments to him about this particular item.
Thank you. We did, he talked to me, and we will start looking at that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before you go, though, on that, the main key is the weighted credit.
Correct.
You know, they can take the, apparently, they can take the AP courses online, they're approved, but if they don't pass the exam, then they don't get the weighted credit.
Oh, I understand, yes.
All right, so then, it's not a question of whether they get credit for AP, because if you take the course and you pass it, you get credit. But the question is whether you get weighted credit.
I think what Ms. Jackson is saying, if I might, is in addition to advanced placement courses, which are very academically rigorous, many universities, or some universities now are offering online courses. And the question is whether or not our students will qualify to take those courses at no charge, because many times you can take, you can take any course that's offered by the University of California system online, but you have to pay for. And those courses versus charging $85 could cost as much as $600 a course. So what we're trying to do is explore who's offering accredited college courses online, and whether or not they have provisions that high school students in San Diego Unified could take those courses at no cost, and that's what we're exploring.
Or less than $85.
Yes, that's what we're exploring.
All right, thank you. Okay. This can be moved. This can, anyone wants to move this item forward?
Move approval.
Okay. Move and second it, please vote. Okay, item 88. Oh, I pulled that one as well, huh? Okay. The question here would be, I would ask about a cost analysis. I think the comments were appropriate, but has a cost analysis been done? I know that we do these contracts a couple of times a year, and so that would be my question.
Ms. Jackson, we have not performed a cost analysis of performance work in-house. We can, but I will tell you my opinion on this. This is a different trade than the landscaper trade. This is commercial tree trimming services addressing large trees.
Oh, we, I understand that, but the point being is, was commented, and certainly, I mean, I go by Morris every day, so I see the trees, and lots of our schools have lots of trees on them. And so the question would be, for the cost analysis would be, if we had a tree team, so to speak, how, you know, would that save us money versus having to go out and get a professional to do that? That's all I'm asking.
Right.
We just need to go back. If you haven't done this, we just need to know what it would cost to have a truck with a bucket that is high enough, and probably two people to run it, and to have them trained, and the liability insurance. And then the next big question comes is, do you have work for this kind of commercial tree trimming every day? Or is this something you need four times a year?
Right, because I know we did this, so you already have numbers from the last couple of years, because I know we had these contracts go out. But just looking at it and seeing if it's cost-effective or not, that's all.
Certainly, we can do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. This can be moved, please?
Moved.
Second.
Second, okay, please vote. The next item is item 099.
Yeah, I'd just like to get from either Mark or Stewart or both, just your reaction to the letter we just received from the...
The, well, the letter was received in our office while we were in closed session today, so I haven't had a chance to thoroughly review the letter. But Mr. Carlin mentioned Assistant General Counsel Sandra Chong. She has had a chance to review it and has sent me an email. As the Board knows, I think that there have been several inquiries about this during the RFP process, and there's a legal analysis of it was started several weeks ago. And through that analysis and the response that I got related to what the Board has just received, it's our opinion that this is, the recommendation is lawful.
Oh, okay, but...
Staff's recommendation is lawful.
Okay, but the question that becomes, I think I heard him saying, certainly, I remember Mr. Markey saying to us at one point in time that we were using these firms because of, I guess it's a question about the two different hats. One hat is construction, and that piece had not been...
I think the little issue is, you buy the board, and you ask the company who you buy the board from to install it, versus going in and doing wholesale construction. And I think that was the key question to legal. And so I know Darrell was involved in this early on, and he might want to touch base with it, and I know that Stu's done some work on it, too.
See if I'm right.
There's probably been more, there's probably been more legal work and research done on these two projects than anything we've worked on in the last seven months. The issue is applied to work incidental to the installation. And public works, and I'm not going to get into a public debate on the legalities of this, but I can assure you that there is a vehicle that we have in an IDIQ contract that will be used separately from this to do the work that incidental to the contract, that there's a percentage of work that's allowed to be done under the contract. We've got four different procurement vehicles in place for the boards, for the installation, for the use of our own PPO staff to put some of these things in, and so forth. We believe this is the fairest and most thoroughly researched contract that we've had to deal with. We thought that this would be challenged at a number of levels. Andy Berg looked into this, and we've changed our procurement model to meet the needs of the community, to allow small businessmen to participate if necessary, and, you know, if they're interested. So I'm very confident that we've left no stone unturned in preparations to get this thing on the street. It's a very exciting and central part of our strategy to get this technology out to our classrooms. Sandra Chong has done a marvelous job in preparation for this, and I have every confidence that she's moved it ahead properly. And I'd also say this to the Board. This happens sometimes, it's very unfortunate. When a company doesn't get a bid, and they get very upset, and they try to look at blaming different people and different reasons for it. I sent you a copy of the rather mean-spirited letter I had received that was accusing me of being involved in the selection process, which started long before I ever came to work here. And Darrell might want to speak to that or anything else. But our staff has worked very hard to make sure that this met legal requirements.
I move approval.
Second.
Move and second it. Any more discussion? Please vote. Okay. I.04, please.
Yeah, I just, very quickly, James, if you want to, I know that, you know, we invested a few years ago in PeopleSoft, and I know there's been this issue. We haven't actually properly used, you know, the software program once we've bought it. So I just, the question is, it's sort of, you know, kind of, what's the, what are these programs doing that the software applications doing that we...
Yeah, so a couple of things. One is, it'll actually be a web interface-based tool that is a budgeting tool, where we can actually develop budgets and kick them out to school sites and operating departments so they can see their budgets themselves online.
Yeah.
You can build hierarchy or managerial levels so different people can have access to, have a different functionality of the tool itself.
Yeah.
So that's essentially the budgeting software tool. The other item is what I would call a dashboard device that lets me even get into the transaction level to be able to get at the root of some of the issues we have, as far as if you're spending a dollar, where are you spending the dollar at? Who has it? What kind of dollar is it? Is it restricted? Is it not restricted?
Right.
I also say to the Board that when we talked to FICM about coming to work here after they had been here three days, one of the emails and phone calls I got from them was to strongly recommend that James and his staff look at these two pieces of software and install them if at all possible.
Right. We're not purchasing this out of general fund.
No, it's out of state school facilities, so what we'll do is, we'll have to use it system-wide, so we'll have it as an asset, you know, so you can use the capital funding source for it. So it's not general fund unrestricted, nor is it general fund restricted.
Move approval with gratitude.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Good motion and second it. Any more discussion? Please vote. That passes 5-0. That completes the consent item, the consent agenda. Are there any more public speakers, Mrs. Ward? There are no more public speakers. We have not finished our...
I'll answer them.
We have not finished our closed session, so we return it to closed session, Board members, and thank you for spending the evening with us.